Yes?
Oh, hi Kathy.
Hi.
Hi, Donna and I are here. Jim, I think...
Will is...
Is here. Will is on his way. I think we have... Hi Jane, we have Jane as well. And... Jane, I think you should be able to use your phone if you want to test it when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Jessica, I am not hearing anything.
We are muted. Well, we were just before I unmuted to say we're muted. So you're all okay.
If I log into this with... It's gonna want me to be the host, right?
I don't think so.
No?
Because I'm already logged in.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, give it a go. It's okay if there are two hosts.
Oh.
I think.
Now it says start your webinar.
What are you trying to do? Just view it?
Yeah.
Um, okay. You try.
Alright, so then I need to enter password. What is my password?
Not enough screens in the room. Pam, I see you have your hand up. Is there a technical issue? Pam. Pam has her hand up and Pam's sitting over me. That was a strange experience.
You can unhand me. My husband has logged me in.
Okay, gotcha. That was strange because I just said hello to you and...
Yep, yep.
You just apologized to everyone, Pam.
Oh.
Alright, I call this meeting... Are you ready?
Yeah, apologies.
Recording in progress.
Go ahead.
Okay, I call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:03. We are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order, and this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. The Board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. When the clerk calls the roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at Township Hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff, present. Corto?
Absent.
Jerome?
Present. Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present. Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel? Okay, um... Vogel, I'm sorry. You accidentally got muted. My apologies. But we see that you're here from Scioto Township.
No, she's not in Scioto Township.
She's not in Scioto Township.
She's in Ohio.
Okay.
And she's still muted too, she's talking.
I... Yeah, it's not...
Okay, can you hear me now, please?
Yes, thank you.
Jessica, I wonder if we're working across purposes. I'm following the prompt to hit star six, but not becoming unmuted. So...
Okay, I don't know. I'll just not... I try to not mute you at all. So I think you know more work than I do. I apologize.
Not to worry. I am in Cincinnati, Ohio, which is Hamilton County.
Hey, we are all learning our geography. Thank you. We have form.
Great. The next item is the adoption of the agenda, and I propose the following amendment to the agenda to add to unfinished business: Township Administrator Employment Agreement with David Rowley. The reasons for this agenda change, it's that we neglected to put a placeholder on unfinished business for the Township Administrator search process, which has been ongoing. And we have need to take action because we have an employment agreement with David Rowley that requires Board approval. So unless there are other modifications to the agenda, I move to adopt the agenda as modified. Trustee Vogel.
Could I please ask that, consistent with our discussion in a previous meeting, that we bring the Compensation Committee, or Commission, whichever it is, Commission, to the top of the agenda. That had been our agreement at the previous meeting. I looked at an agenda online. That wasn't what it said. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one.
I think she's intending to bring it above approval of the minutes, Will.
Oh, do you want to bring it...
To the top?
To the top, above approval of the minutes? Is that what you're saying?
Uh... Either side of the minutes is fine. I just, I want to honor the fact that it needs to be first, which is consistent with what we had decided earlier.
Okay, it is the first item on the agenda after approval of the minutes.
Okay, that's not what the agenda on the website shows, so I'm glad to hear that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll support the agenda as proposed.
Okay, so we have motion and support. Please call the roll.
I actually got another proposed amendment to call for discussion, or...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh wait, well, we can just call this. Just call this and we'll move forward. Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
Why don't we amend the agenda to add that item?
Yes.
And then if there isn't another amendment proposed, we can consider that as well.
Perfect.
So I guess the motion is to support the addition of that item to the agenda, that item being the employment agreement as an item of unfinished business. Is that okay to convert your support for that, trustee Jerome? I think that was a yes.
Yes.
Okay, so please call the roll on that motion.
Thank you. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So there's additional amendment?
Yes, I wanted to make a motion to add, under approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 17th, just the motion regarding the supervisor's salary, that we would just approve that motion. And briefly, why? I've stated this since we stopped approving minutes. My concern is, and this is just a general concern looking out for the township, that that meeting and that motion, the township is currently being sued around that, and I would prefer if we would have at least that action affirmed and not hanging out there. So that's my request.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Flintoff to... I'm not even sure what that would mean. That would mean to approve just that item from the minutes
Yes.
of the August 17th special meeting, support by Noel. I think before we turn to Board members for discussion, I would like to ask the township attorney whether this, in your view, is a necessity for some legal reason.
I don't know whether it's a necessity. I've not ever experienced pulling something out and having some approval of it, which is not an approval of the minutes. If you wanted to formalize the supervisor's salary, one way to do it would be to have a resolution that ratifies the action in August, and if the resolution is signed by the clerk and the supervisor at the same time it's adopted, that becomes the final action. I think the clerk is referring to the fact that most actions of the Board become final upon approval of the minutes of that meeting where the action took place.
So there is another way that we could accomplish this without inventing a kind of approval of part of the minutes for a meeting?
I don't know, that would use the word inventing, but there is another way that you could do it. But it is going to be another step. It would essentially be another resolution, and what you would do is you would have the resolution prepared in writing, ready to be executed upon adoption.
Thank you, Jim. I would just note, this is a... What our minutes state is a motion to approve the attached resolution. So the resolutions have been in effect. I'm not concerned about that. My concern was just to have any outstanding action hanging out in draft minutes for so many months, so...
Well, this is not something that we have discussed ahead of this meeting, and rather than try and talk it through and reach some kind of consensus in this moment, what I would propose is that we not approve this change to the agenda, that we instead have some consultation outside of the meeting and come up with a plan to address the clerk's concern and bring that to our next regular meeting on December 14th, if necessary. So I would propose that we not approve this change to the agenda. Are there further comments before we have a vote on this?
We have the motion on the table, though.
Yes, we do have the motion on the table. Are there further comments on the motion before we have a vote on the motion to add this item to the agenda?
The item, which is to consider approval only of the motion language regarding the supervisor's salary in the draft August 17th minutes.
I don't see any further comments, so perhaps... Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Vogel, did you want to comment? No, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't see further comment. Please call the roll on the motion to add that item to the agenda.
Sure. To approve just that motion from the draft 8/17 minutes. Hathaway?
No.
Palmer?
Yes, I don't see any reason.
Flintoff, yes. Jerome?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Motion fails three to three.
I would move that we approve the agenda and move forward with the meeting. Is there support?
I don't think you have to do another approval.
Oh, I don't have to do another approval?
I don't think so. If we've amended it and we're set.
Oh, alright, then let's proceed with the agenda as amended. In that case, the next item is approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the November 9th meeting. Unfortunately, these draft minutes were not published until late on November 22nd, less than 24 hours prior to this meeting. And this pattern of delivering minutes just before the meeting at which they are to be approved does not give anyone adequate time to review. So I therefore move to table the approval of these minutes to the Board's regular meeting on December 28th. Is there support?
I support it.
So it's been moved and supported by Treasurer Palmer.
I would comment?
Sure.
This is a chance for us to approve minutes, just the way the old Board did and others have before us. I think I would say we could just start this. It was just two weeks ago. What Jack used to do, which worked nicely, is to just say, you know, kind of go through page one, page two, section C, section D, and just go through it while it's fresh in our heads. I thought the motion last night, which I didn't support, but I thought it was to set aside that block and start moving forward today. So again, I just can't encourage us enough. I hear that people feel daunted by this, but I know that we can do this. And I would just really encourage us to start tonight.
Can I?
Oh, sure. Treasurer Palmer, and then trustee Vogel.
When we were talking about this, Jessica,
Yeah.
I thought I heard you with a concern of doing some, and then as far as your, what you have to do to make sure everything is...
In order?
In order.
Yes.
And that's why I, you know, I supported this because it will keep... I mean, that's the concern I thought you had mentioned.
Yeah, thank you. I do have that concern, Donna, but in my ranking of concerns on this issue... And, you know, Jim is like, Jessica, pick your least worst option, you know, was Jim's friendly advice. So that's what I'm trying to do here, and somehow encourage everybody that we can do this. And so I would say, Donna, I don't think it's a, you know, it's illogical, it's problematic. I don't think it's illegal. I think we could go through, this was just two weeks ago. We spent five hours together. I think we remember it, and go through it, try to do it right. And we could even at the end, you know, just say, hey, approval, you know, we could always correct these if there's something that happened in the preceding minutes that changes it. So I've been thinking a little bit more about it, Donna, over the last couple of days, and just trying to figure out how to keep it going. And this motion is to wait till December 28th?
Well, can what were the others that specifically that meeting's going to do?
Yeah, so it's just, again, it'll be too much for the 28th, and there we go, so...
Now, another point.
Yeah.
When I printed off the packet,
Yeah.
I have no backup for that meeting. Why does it do that? I don't have the minutes.
Well, I can't troubleshoot that right now, but I would give you a copy. You can get another for myself.
You may have printed them off before they were posted, because they were posted, they were posted late yesterday.
Yeah, I didn't. I sent them out early this morning.
Can I comment, please?
Yes, trustee Vogel.
Clerk Flintoff, I support the process you are describing. The key enabler for that process to work is that we have the minutes more than one day prior. I want to be able to read the minutes. I want to be able to reflect on them. I want to be able to know how I stand relative to the minutes. And especially coming into a holiday season, travel time, one day, it's not consistent. With OMA, it's not consistent with good practice. I would propose not to table these to the 28th, but to the next meeting while it is fresh. But in fairness to the Board, we need more than one day. It's just not fair to colleagues to expect it to show up and to be responsive in one day. So I would like you to guess.
I do hold that as a goal. I hear you, Jane.
Well, I would take that as a friendly amendment to table them to the next regular meeting on December 14th.
Do you support that, Donna?
Yes, I'll support the minute.
If there aren't further comments, please call the roll on the motion to table to the minutes of November 9th to the next regular meeting on December 14th.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, no. Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the next item is the special order on unfinished business. This is the nominations to the Compensation Commission. At our November 9th meeting, Treasurer Palmer proposed that the three officers, the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, could meet to see if we could find a compromise on the nominations to the Compensation Commission. The Board tabled this item again so that we three could meet with that goal in mind. We discussed various options. The idea of changing the allocation of the staggered terms of office was a compromise that met with the Treasurer's support. Assigning the one, two, three, four, and five-year terms in reverse alphabetical order was a change on which we could all agree. We did not agree on a change to the people to be nominated. I hope that we can move forward with these nominations tonight. These five individuals are all eligible and qualified for this task. The staggered terms mean that others, perhaps some of those who applied later in the process, may have a chance to serve on the Commission as turnover occurs. However, we must act on these nominations tonight. There is no time for further delay because the window for the Commissioners to complete their work will close at the end of the 2021 calendar year. Therefore, I move that the Board of Trustees appoint Jonathan Boyd, Kathleen Brant, Spalding Clark, Monica Knowles, and Erwin Martin to serve on the Scioto Township Compensation Commission. Their appointments commence immediately and will be to staggered terms as follows. Boyd is nominated to a five-year term. Brant is nominated to a four-year term. Clark is nominated to a three-year term. Knowles is nominated to a two-year term, and Martin is nominated to a one-year term. Is there support?
I'll support that.
So we have a motion by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Is there discussion? I think I saw trustee Knowles hand up first, and then clerk Flintoff.
Okay, all of these people are clearly qualified. That was never the issue. The issue that we discussed at the last Board meeting was that we need a diverse group of Scioto residents. And we don't need two former elected officials and the spouse of the former township supervisor all together on the committee. I think that you had a pool of individuals to choose from, and many of them were highly qualified. Also, I mentioned at the last meeting, and this has not been adequately addressed by you, Will. We learned recently from a forwarded email from David Reed that former supervisor Jack Knowles had been working essentially as an agent for the township on some of the sidewalk and pathway issues. Apparently, he had directed one of our engineering consultants on a specific issue. I was not aware of that. I would like you to report to the Board now on the current status of any involvement of Jack Knowles on any committees or any Board projects. I'd like to know clearly what his involvement is. Are there any conflicts? What is going on? Because none of this has been made clear. And then it...
Sorry, I thought you were done.
And then to conclude, I want everyone to be clear that the state statute and our township ordinance setting up the Compensation Commission clearly states that a member of the immediate family of an officer shall not be appointed to the Compensation Commission. Well, Jack Knowles was the former supervisor, and indeed, if he is involved in any township business at this time, he essentially becomes an agent of the township. And I want to hear your explanations, Will, and provide more information on this. Thank you.
I have a comment also.
It's not a time for public comment yet.
Froda, just one moment. Will will call for a public comment when it's time. Thank you.
Well, this relates to a conversation between Will Hathaway and myself, and I think it...
Froda, can you hold off just a moment until we get to public comment?
I would like to make my comment before you vote.
We will have a time for public comment before the vote.
Okay, then I will.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Froda.
Clerk Flintoff, it's your turn.
Jane had her hand up.
Well, you had your hand up first. I called on trustee Noel, and then I called on you, and then I'll call on trustee Vogel.
Okay. First of all... I don't know how else to put it, but a personal request is often when we're at an issue like this at the top of the meeting, like with the summary you just gave about what we talked about and we three, or what our attorney said, or what Donna, you and me agreed. It's, I, I think, I'd request that you try to use I-statements, as cheesy as that sounds. But when you say we, 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 it, it's certainly what you described does not at all represent the conversation that we had. If I were to describe that conversation, I would say, thank you, Donna, for grabbing each of us by our ears and dragging us into a room to have a very good conversation. And Donna, I just really appreciate it, and I mean that. And I thought you did a really nice job of facilitating and forcing questions. And I appreciate that. And, and you really tried to move the supervisor. And we were talking about compromises around lots of things, and it felt very possible. And what I am, what's just really too bad for the township is that I think that the supervisor felt like it was a surrender and not a compromise. And so he said, no, we're not changing names. I'll consider changing terms. And, and with that, and, and that's his prerogative. This is one of the very few things in the statute that is just up to the supervisor nominating. And, and it's really important, Will, to, Will, to do this. So it's going to be these names. We know that. But I will just say, I, I wish that the supervisor had tried to, to meet us halfway or meet me halfway, meet, move more. I will just share, my concerns remain the same consistently. I have ethical concerns. If we followed, if we had a basic model ethics ordinance, if we followed standard ethics, training and procedures, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. Because we wouldn't be appointing former officials, spouses of former officials, to determine the salaries of officials. The compensation commission is intended to represent the electorate. We are supposed to have as much distance as possible. And so you've heard my concerns before. I will just say I'm very disappointed. This was one of the first good governance. Let's mature and grow up a little bit, do things in a way that's, that's more clear, that has more of the, you know, clear parameters that a community of 17,000 should have. So with that, I'll be voting no. And because it will be one proposal, I'm sorry, I can't express my support. For those I would support, again, nothing to do with the individuals, just their status as former officials. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
I think trustee Vogel, you were next.
I just want to address trustee Noel's question and confirm very clearly as the board representative to TAP that Jack Knowles is a member of TAP and brings just fantastic experience. We do not have a project manager. We have not had a township manager. It has been a team effort to move Zebra Pathway forward. Will has been the exclusive decision maker as the supervisor and in providing direction. Jack and I have been walking the route for what will be Phase Four. And he has had excellent input, just as other members of TAP have had. That input comes together. We figure out, sort of in this case, what a route proposal would be. And that direction goes to Will to go to OHM. I'm very clear. Even as a trustee, it is not my role to direct township resources. It, all of the formal direction has moved through the supervisor. And, and Jack Knowles, as well as the four, or five, or six, whatever number are on TAP these days, are all Sciop resident volunteers.
Further comments? I mean, he's not.
But let's clarify that.
Yeah, all right. Jane.
I think it's important.
Jane, I, I was just going to look it up to confirm, but the clerk has already confirmed that Jack is actually not a member of TAP.
Not appointed by the board.
We have, we have relied on him in all of his experience in previous Pathway efforts. But he is not in a position to provide direction to OHM, and OHM knows it. It's got to come through me and then through Will. And that has been the chain of command. And I've been very clear about it because I'm walking a fine line. We do not have staff support. We did not, and today, do not have a manager. And I have been very careful to move all authority through the supervisor to execute board direction.
Are there further comments? Trustee Noel.
Yeah, I would like to ask our township attorney for an opinion on this because Jack Knowles has apparently been playing an integral role in the TAP committee. Exactly what it is, I'm not sure, but I'm hearing some of this from Jane for the first time. And as such, he has an affiliation with Sciop Township. I know that previously you have recommended to this body that anyone employed by the University of Michigan or retired or married to someone who was employed by the University of Michigan wasn't qualified to be on the compensation commission. So I'm wondering, with this kind of connection with Jack Knowles, does this raise any potential issues for you under MCL 41.95A? For A?
No. Then I'll expand a little bit. The statute specifically says, "An officer or employee of a government agency or unit or member, or unit, or member of the immediate family of an officer or employee shall not be appointed to the commission." The reason I have opined that an employee of the University of Michigan or any other university or school district or other public agency is not qualified to serve is because those are government agencies. People sometimes don't think of school districts as being a unit of government, but they tax and are public employees. The University of Michigan is a constitutional institution that can even adopt ordinances. And so a employee of a public university is an employee of a government agency or unit. What I've heard about Mr. Knowles is that he has given advice to the township, but I have not heard anything that says that he is either an officer or an employee of a government agency or unit or is a member of the immediate family of an officer or employee.
He would be if Monica were appointed.
I don't think she's an officer at that point.
So, so the committee members aren't officers, yeah.
Sorry, we're not talking about Jack, but.
You're talking about the board or employees.
Yes. Sorry.
Are there further comments from members of the Board of Trustees? Are there members of the public who would like to speak to this particular agenda item? We have a person in attendance in person. Please approach the table.
You've got some help there.
Thank you. Jonathan Boyd, a Sciop resident. So it seems like you guys have not heard that residents want a change. So I decided that maybe what you should do is see the words because your ears are clogged. This is not a compromise, Supervisor Hathaway. This is you changing the chairs on the deck. Residents like me feel that you are not working in the resident's best interest. We want to change. We want new members. And, and, or disappointed. And I'm not happy. My husband's on for five years. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who are present who would like to speak to this topic? If not, then let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
Okay, first up is Froda, and second up is Peter Davis. Froda?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. About a week ago, let me start over. I did volunteer to serve on committee to the compensation commission. And I sent in my, my required documents via email. I did get a phone call back about a week ago from Will, and we had a nice chat on the phone. And you said, oh, you seem like you were quite qualified. Oh, let me, let me forget, I forgot to say one thing. My name is Frodo Masitbak. It's 5127 Dexter and Harbor Road, Sciop Township. I forgot to say that. And you said, I look qualified, and we had a good chat on the phone. And you ended the conversation by saying, I am going to remove someone off my list and put you on the list. And it'll be dealt with on the 23rd of November. And I said, that'd be very nice. Thank you very much. And then I opened the agenda today, and I see there is, my name is not on the list. And that is not the way to treat people, to say, you're going to put me on the list, someone on the list, and then you don't even communicate with me that you, that you decided I shouldn't be on the list. That bothers me that that is how the operation is. So having lived in this township for 44 years, I expect something better than that from the elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Froda.
Peter Davis.
Peter Davis?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Peter.
Hi, Peter Davis, 3225 North Wagner Road. I want to respond to something that Jim Fink said. Jim said that the University of Michigan is an agency of the state of Michigan. But he also said that the University of Michigan is a constitutional entity. The latter point is correct. The former point is not. The University of Michigan is not an agency of the University of Michigan in any sense of the word. There are three universities in the state of Michigan whose trustees are elected by the voters, University of Michigan, Michigan State University, and Wayne University. Those three are the only ones. The other, the other universities, such as Eastern, the trustees are appointed by the governor. Those other universities are agencies. University of Michigan is a constitutional entity in its own right. I was their chief tri lawyer for 20 years. I dealt with those issues many, many times. And to, to call the University of Michigan an agency is an insult to the university. So that, that, that entity, that constitutional entity does not fall within the statute concerning the appointment of people to this, this commission. I do believe, though, that there would be also a conflict of interest for Jack Knowles' wife to serve on this entity. And she, her name should be taken off. I think that while Will Hathaway, you have the right to name people who are going to serve on the compensation commission. You should discuss that with, with the trustees and pick someone that's acceptable to everyone. Because the people in that commission are going to be deciding salaries for all, all township officials. And I think that for you to vote on your own resolution or motion, raising your salary was improper. And I think that you should do the right thing here and discuss these appointments with your fellow members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is, sorry, the names jumped around. Next up is Gillian Carey, followed by Pat Stein. Gillian?
Good evening.
Hello.
Trustee Vogel, I'm curious, August 16th, you emailed, Monday, August 16th, you emailed Jack Knowles asking about the compensation commission and what, how to move forward with this. Any suggestions you might have for this? We need to get it well-balanced. So you already have an agenda before all of this. It's like, you know, and, and you keep using the words, we, we talked about this, we agreed upon this. Are you deliberating outside of board meetings? Because that's what it sounds like, and that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So here's this email to Jack that is not an agent and has not been approved or nominated by, nominated by Supervisor Hathaway, nor approved by the board to be on the so-called task committee. So he's working behind the scenes. There's even an email that states from Jack, we need to get attorney Jim Fink on, on eminent domain so we can take the Leuma and the Norton properties. You know, this is just crazy. Now, the other thing is, if we're going to use the excuse of education or not, or working for a university, it states right here, Erwin Martin is a Sciop resident and professor in the School of Health Sciences at Eastern Michigan University. That disqualifies him. Now, if you say he's retired, then why did you create this file for him? He should be disqualified. Monica Knowles should be disqualified because Jack Knowles is heavily, heavily involved in the township as an agent, as whatever he is. Spalding Clark, I have no issue with Spalding. He's been great as far as my interactions with him and what he's done for the township. But, you know, this stacking the deck again, just to get your doubling of his salary. And by the way, Supervisor Hathaway, you did a Freudian slip. And one of the meetings, you said project management or property management. And Alec Jerome pointed that out to you, and you go, oh, that's my day job. So how can that be your day job if you're working 50 to 60 hours a week for the township? You know, this doesn't make sense. It's just crazy. There's just too much going on behind the scenes. There's decisions made. And then you give the tell for who's supposed to bring it up during a meeting. This is not how a government is supposed to work. You're there for the residents. You're there for the township. You're not there for your agenda. Discuss.
Thank you, Gillian. Next up is Pat Stein, followed by Caroline Altmar. Pat?
Hi, Pat Stein, Sciop Township, Washtenaw County. There's a very important vote about to take place regarding the compensation commission nominees. And I would like to ask the board members who are considering voting to approve these nominees to really think about the facts. There were qualified applications, I'm sorry, applicants that were passed over for this commission because Supervisor Hathaway and trustee Vogel wanted a well-balanced group to serve. The term well-balanced is how it was noted in the email trustee Vogel sent out to people like Erwin Martin and Jack Knowles, soliciting alternative nominees for the commission. It's pretty easy to explain the term well-balanced in this case as meaning stacked deck. Stacked as in guaranteed to have the desired outcome. Not necessarily the right outcome or the fair outcome, but the desired outcome. The voting history of some of you on this board is that. The voting history of some of you on this board is that you always voted with the supervisor. You never questioned the issues at hand or debated or discussed the various proposals. You just voted blindly voted. Before you place your vote again tonight, please ask yourself, who benefits from your vote? Who suffers because of the way you vote? I'll tell you who benefits. None other than our own Scioto Township Supervisor, Will Hathaway. A supervisor whose agenda can be seen as being self-serving more often than not. As to who suffers depending on your vote tonight, the residents of Scioto Township, that's who. The same residents that voted for you to represent them on this board where you currently serve. Please stop voting to approve agenda items that are not in the best interest of your fellow residents. Please stop leaving the residents of Scioto Township feeling so betrayed by your unwillingness to vote for the good of all and not just for the benefit of one. Please vote for this commission to be placed on hold so the entire board is given the opportunity to review the applications and select a qualified and diverse group of nominees. Because Scioto Township deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Caroline Altmar. Caroline?
Thank you very much for hearing me tonight. I just have one very small comment. When the residents showed up with signs for public comment today, I was looking very carefully at the trustees' faces. And Trustee Vogel, I'm very disappointed with your shaking your head no. When you shook your... you can go back and look at the video, but you didn't. You shook your head and you just shook your head no. It wasn't a severe shake, but it was a small shake no. And I just think that is just abhorrent. Absolutely abhorrent. And I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Next up is Joe Pattinson, who I will guess is actually Rob. Joe?
Hi, sorry for the misidentification on the name. Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. I had to wait until several other people spoke tonight to get control of my fury over the way Mr. Masibak has been treated by Will Hathaway. Mr. Masibak has extreme honor and integrity. Mr. Hathaway has proven that he does not. I am absolutely furious at the way you have treated Mr. Masibak. I also find unusual tonight that you have changed the agenda from the normal format to put the Compensation Commission appointments ahead of public comment. I arranged my public comment tonight in order to address the Compensation Commission, not realizing that you'd put it before the public comment, period. Unfortunately, I don't have written comments, so I have to do this off the cuff. But it seems what you didn't want tonight was for residents to have a chance to comment on your Compensation Commission appointments, which once again, you have... I don't understand why you are continuing to follow the path you walked. But this is a mess. You're making a massive mistake. And if this board follows you, they are in addition, making a massive mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Stephen Feinberg. Stephen?
Can you hear me, Jessica?
Yes, hi.
Thank you very much. Steve Feinberg, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County. I think it's extremely important that there be a huge amount of transparency and lack of conflict with the committee. In the past, we had one of our past trustees, Erwin Martin, who's in charge of the GFL fiasco. I would say in the words of Erwin Martin, that the silent majority in Scioto Township is not behind him or trust him in all of his endeavors. And he's a very poor individual to put on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other interested public? I see one more hand, Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hey folks, yeah. Everything I wanted to say has already been said. But I do want to thank you for this clown show. I finished watching the Isaac Asmau Foundation series on Apple TV earlier today. And it's just nice to have something to do with my evening. And it's not really comedy, it's not really adventure. But it gives ever, all of us a nice show every time Will tends to, what, push his way through, sit there with his hand covering his mouth, maybe raise an eyebrow when you say something like the word shenanigans. Will, you're transparent, even though you won't provide anything. This is about money, this is about power, and this is about you getting what you want. And you really don't care what the residents want or need. As long as you have your followers to cheer you on and defend you. Andemen Haw rub their hands together when they agree with you ultimately, subverting the interests of the local residents. So thanks for the show. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jonathan. I see one more hand from somebody who's already spoken. Otherwise, no new hands.
Okay. Oh, Trustee Vogel, do you want to respond to one of the public comments with a fact question?
I do. Excuse me, I do. I do wear my emotions on my face. I apologize for that. There was no intention, possibly. I'm trying to listen on my phone and it's hard to hear. Possibly that was seen as a no. I am not aware of an intent to shake my head no. That's one of three things I want to say very briefly. Apparently, I reached out. Every email I have ever sent, along with other trustees, has been for you. So apparently, I sent to email in August. My best recollection of that is it was maybe around the time we discovered, we had the assumption that we could not go with candidates from U of M. And so I reached out to a number of folks to try to generate candidates. I wasn't looking to advocate for any one or another, but rather to generate candidates. The third and final thing I want to notice for us, this board, please hear this. This board voted unanimously last March to include full-time compensation for the supervisor in the budget that we approved. And in August, five of us voted together to raise that salary. This is not any act in isolation. It's been in the public domain. The comments, the discussion has been in the public domain. The votes have been unanimous and a strong majority. So I just want to put those data points back on the table for us. Thank you.
I would like to respond to a couple of the public comments.
And then there is one to one when you're ready.
Oh, there's another. I want to wait until all of the public comments are complete. If there's a new public comment, let's give that person the opportunity.
Okay, spellbound.
Spellbound.
Thank you. It's Christina York. Christina York from Scioto Township.
Hi.
Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to change my name on the thing.
No, it's fine. I love it when people do that. It changes it up. Welcome, Christina.
Thank you. I have heard today and from following along that we, and Trustee Knoll has indicated that all candidates in the pool were qualified. And I just want to acknowledge that this is a very fortunate position for the board to have a pool of qualified candidates to serve. This is a time when many businesses in the county are facing enormous challenges in finding team members and people willing to commit time and skill. So I just want to call positive attention to the efforts around recruiting and creating a pool of qualified candidates. I just also want to thank Supervisor Hathaway for the professional manner in which he is representing our township.
Thank you, Christina. No other comments.
All right.
Will?
So there are a couple of comments that were made that I would like to respond to. First of all, I would like to apologize to Froda. I should have circled back to you and let you know what the outcome was of the discussions. When I spoke with you, I did indeed say that I thought you were very qualified. And I still think you are very qualified. I may have given the impression, I guess I did give the impression that it was a done deal. But that is not the, my recollection of what I said and how I thought I left our conversation. So I apologize for leaving you with that impression. I meant to convey that this was still an ongoing discussion with other members of the Board of Trustees. And, but you're right, I should have circled back to you to let you know what the outcome of that process was. And I did not do that. So I take responsibility for that and I apologize. And Rob, I'm sorry that I caused... I know that you are a friend of Froda's and so I'm sorry I caused you distress by that error on my part. With regard to your point about the movement of this item to the top of the agenda, the board voted to place this item at the top of the agenda. It's kind of an unusual situation. We don't usually do that. But that was part of the motion when this item was tabled at our prior meeting. And that is why it is where it is on the agenda. Now that we've had all of the comments, you would like another comment? Are you responding to a fact question from the public comments?
I have a question and comment for you. When did you speak with Froda? What day was that?
Oh gosh, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look.
And I ask, not, you know, I'm saying, I'm wondering if it was before our conversation?
Yes, it was before we talked, you and Donna and I.
Okay, so we talked on Tuesday, the 16th, in the morning. And I don't recall your indicating at all that you had talked to candidates. Except the one that we'd overlooked, that Gillian alerted us to?
Yes, I did speak with him.
You did mention that.
I did speak with him.
But we had specifically talked about the possibility, the potential compromise involved placing Froda. And you didn't indicate at all that you talked to him. And I, it's surprising to me. I mean, not that you talked to him or not, but it's surprising to me because you acted like that was so off the table. You presented as though, I don't want to say act, excuse me, but you presented as though that was so off the table. And so, question and then the comment. When you say, "I didn't circle back, I had ongoing discussion with other trustees and didn't circle back," you know, to that, and then I'm gonna jump, Jane, to just reflect on one thing, is when you say, you know, about all the things being in the public. I will say, when I look at what was in my mind going into the meeting of August 17th and what was, I imagine what was in your mind going into the meeting of the 17th about that resolution, you know, I understood it to be wrong, likely illegal. And it's clear to me that there was a group that had different information, that had all this information, ideas about stuff. And so I just want to say about the deliberating, the Sariata meeting, and it's not to accuse anyone, but I'm just, it causes problems for this body when there are all these one-on-one-on-one-on-one conversations between meetings when it's really right here is the time that we're supposed to be having the substance of our conversations. So I just, it feels misleading. I feel misled when I reflect back on a conversation with Donna and Will and then find out that he'd had this level of conversation with Froda, which I didn't know about. And while I certainly don't need to know all the details, it's just, I'm just reflecting on that because I think that that's part of the problem with the seven of us. Is, you know, there's this parsing out of information and we're not all working with good information. That's all.
Okay, well, I disagree with some of your characterizations of the conversations that occurred outside of this meeting. And I also disagree with the idea that board members should somehow only communicate with each other in this meeting. That is not how the township government works. That's not how any government works. And I would like now to move to calling the roll on this vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
I still have a question. Thank you.
I would like to address what we did at the meeting that I insisted on at the last meeting. All of the perception that goes on is getting very, very hard for us to try and do a good job. Now, at the meeting between Jessica, Will, and myself, that I, as you remember, very explicitly asked for, we talked about compromise. We talked about possibly changing out some of the nominees on the list. But we decided or supported, because Will had mentioned, when people volunteer and they agree, and then we say, "Oh, no, we're gonna take you off and put somebody else on." In essence, that's kind of what we were thinking, only obviously wouldn't be done in a polite manner. And we felt like that even jeopardizes the future when we need volunteer citizens for committees or different activities in the township. Why would anybody want to volunteer if today we say yes, thank you, and tomorrow we say, "Oh, no, we have somebody else"? It was a good point that was brought up. And so then we talked about how can we come up with some kind of compromise which resulted in the change of the terms. So we looked at that. What we have presented tonight is what was agreed upon. And that's how that came about. I have to agree to push somebody off after they were put on the committee or, I'm sorry, nominated for the committee. That's not right, you guys. All of you who have expressed your feelings, if it was you, how would you feel? I just, it's very, very hard. But that's how we came up with the way it's proposed tonight. Honoring those who said yes, and it was difficult to get those people to say yes. And how we came up with changing out the terms around, thinking that that might give everyone a chance to do, you know, do what they could. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Knoll, I see your hand raised. I'm mindful of the time. I'd like to move along. If you have another point that you would like to make, could you please do it succinctly?
I want to comment that Donna, at our last meeting, when you pushed tabling this issue, I felt hopeful that there was some chance for some meaningful compromise with this board. But tonight, after listening to some of the discussion, I'm very deeply concerned. And more concerned than I've been. I mean, my concern has been growing with all this conflict. But it grew some more tonight. And I'm shocked that other board members find this acceptable and that others apparently don't have the ability to look at the total situation and get insight into the situation, perhaps considering some of the comments of the public that we've heard here tonight. So, that's all I can say. This was succinct, Will. And I'm so very disappointed.
Thank you. I'd like to move now to call the roll. I think everyone has had multiple chances to speak on this topic.
There is a member of the public who... There is a member of the public who tells me he's had his hand up, and I haven't seen it, he hasn't spoken.
All right, one final comment, and then we're moving to the roll, please.
Okay, Steve King, you're on.
Yes, hi, thank you, this is Steve King, Scioto Township, Lamp lighter Drive. My point is very simple, transparency doesn't end. Transparency is a binary issue. If this board is gonna be transparent, it has no end. If you're gonna be making comments, if you're gonna be doing work for the constituency of 17,000 residents of Scioto Township, your transparency is that you are a member of the board, you're paid to serve every member of this township, every resident. The fact that I have is that, when is the last time that a meeting minutes have been approved by the board? Meeting minutes are a fact that you can be FOIA'd, meeting minutes are things that are going into comment. Meeting minutes show that there are discussions that have been taking place. Meeting minutes have not been approved for a number of reasons, this is a matter of non-transparency. I have a very big issue with this, because if you're not gonna be transparent with the residents, we can't be transparent with you. This is an issue, this is an issue that's gonna be carrying forward as long as this happens. I strongly urge this board and everybody else that's present to make sure that transparency is job number one. You are doing work for us as residents. Every dollar you earn is transparency. You must give us facts, not opinions, and serve us. Approve board minutes, show us what the facts are, where your loyalties lie, and please make sure that you are giving us the service that we deserve. If you do not approve meeting minutes, if you do not continue with transparency, you have proven that you're serving only yourselves and not the residents of this township. It's a very simple fact. You can make comments about this as you will, but facts are facts. Truth can hurt, you're not doing your job. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Steve.
So with that, I would like to call the roll on the motion. I'll read it again quickly so that everyone is clear. The motion is, the Board of Trustees appoint Jonathan Boyd, Kathleen Brandt, Balden Clark, Monica Knowles, and Erwin Martin to serve on the Scioto Township Compensation Commission. Their appointments commence immediately and will be staggered terms as follows. Boyd is nominated to a five-year term, Brandt is nominated to a four-year term, Clark is nominated to a three-year term, Knowles is nominated to a two-year term, and Martin is nominated to a one-year term. Please call the roll.
Vogel?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jessica, why are you choosing to reverse this order just out of the blue?
I've actually been doing this for about the last four or five months, where I rotate the order. That's something we've talked about in the Rules of Order, about, because you're always so, you may not have noticed, but I've been doing that.
I vote yes.
I have been, but I can do it in a different order if you want. I have been, Donna.
Let's just proceed. Do you vote yes or no on the motion?
I said yes.
Okay, yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
No.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Motion passes four to two. I'd like to make a motion to ask that the township attorney and office coordinator work together to convene and provide staff support to the compensation commission, and to direct all seven officers of the board communicate regarding compensation issues to the compensation commission as a body, not to individual members of the commission, and, in fact, ask that all seven of us immediately cease all communication with commissioners now through December 31st, and to request that the compensation commission return four separate determinations of compensation, one for each, the positions of supervisor, for treasurer, for clerk, and for trustee.
Supervisor Hathaway, I'm sorry to interrupt, but a situation has come up that I have to attend to, and I need to step away, and I'm not sure when I'll be able to get back. I'm sorry to intrude. If, I want to express my wholehearted support, if the vote for the new administrator is coming up this evening, I am confident we have broad support, but at the moment, I must step away to attend to a situation. I apologize.
Come back if you can.
Thank you, trustee Vogel. I see a hand raised, trustee Noel.
Yes, I would like to support the motion on the table. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so we have a motion by Flintoff, we have support by trustee Noel.
Do you want to discuss or have questions?
Yeah, I guess we should discuss, because this is the first time that this has come up.
Yeah, that's how meetings are, they're spontaneous.
Yes, sometimes they are.
They are, it's real-time democracy, so it does three things. It requests that our township attorney, which we've talked to him about, and office coordinator work together to convene and provide staff support to the commission, so that none of us have to talk to the appointed commissioners, and that they have some staff support to get scheduled and research, and Jim has provided support to other compensation commissions, finding their ways. Compensation commission, just as any member of the public would, to the commission as a whole, not to individual members, and to, in fact, ask that all seven of us cease all communication with those five people now through December 31st, and then to request, ultimately the commission's gonna do what it wants to do, but to request that the compensation commission return four separate determinations of compensation, one for each of the four positions. Different compensation commissions do it differently, I'm a strong proponent of the separate determinations, I think it's cleaner, and there's multiple reasons for that.
Okay, I think it might be helpful if township attorney would come up and sort of discuss this with us, because I'm unclear on what the legal implications are of all of this that has been laid out, and I would like the opinion of an attorney on that.
It's all legal. Sorry, spoiler alert.
I meant a real attorney.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Have I mentioned my reluctance to give spontaneous ad hoc legal advice?
You have. Why don't you give them a better question, Will?
Jim, thank you. I would like to understand why we would need to have these kinds of restrictions, and what the benefits of them would be from a legal standpoint. I don't necessarily object to them, I just, this is the first time that I've heard about this.
It's ethical.
I actually am directing my question to the township attorney.
The only part of that question I'm prepared to answer is the question of why you would have staff and me work with the compensation commission, and that is to facilitate their discussion. As the clerk mentioned, I have some experience of working with compensation commissions, I think I can probably help them move their discussion along and formulate their resolutions and determinations of salaries if they make one. The rest of it, I think, is more of a political question than a legal question.
Okay, in terms of the logistics, since you have some experience working with compensation commissions in other municipalities, what, how would you see this unfolding? How would you see this working in terms of the work of the commission and in terms of communications? Would, I mean, I'm trying to grasp this, so the communications any one of us as board of trustee members might have with the commission would be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individuals on the commission?
Right.
So that would be presumably, we would have some kind of email list, and then any kind of communications would go to the commission as a whole? Is that how it would unfold in your experience?
Different, you're sending it to Jim and, you know, sending it to Christie, we could do the logistics, I'm just saying to the body.
Yeah, my experience, which is not that broad, but I have done a handful of compensation commission processes, is that the trustees and the other elected officials don't have any communication with the compensation commission during the period of their deliberation. The last one I did, they met three times, I think. They had their organizational meeting, talked about what information they would like to have, they had their second meeting where they circled in on it, and they had their final meeting where they completed their determinations and adopted their resolutions for transmission to the township clerk.
So it might work better to have any communications from members of the board of trustees come to you, and then you would decide what to do with them in terms of communicating with the compensation commission?
That is not my motion. I think that we can figure out, I mean, this is a logistical thing, my motion, the intention of my motion is not to get into logistics, it is that any communication to the commission would be to the commission. If we have a question for our township attorney, that's a separate question.
Well, I think I'm trying to understand from someone who has some actual experience working with compensation commissions, our township attorney, how this would actually work in practice. It sounds to me, from what you're saying, Jim, that actually the motion should be modified to say that the board of trustees members will have no communication with the compensation commission.
That's a policy question.
I'm actually not saying anything to answer your question.
Well, I know, but based on what you were saying, and in your prior experience, board, the officials for whom the compensation commission is making determinations don't communicate with the compensation commission, and there really isn't a reason for the members of the board to communicate with the compensation commission. If they can get the information they need through you as the township attorney, and the coordination they need from the staff, then there's no need.
I'll correct myself before Mr. Davis does, that I have seen communications from township officials to a compensation commission where the officials are suggesting the commission return with a zero raise immediately, and the idea behind that particular communication was to not have the commission, if it was willing to do that, have three or four meetings before it came to that conclusion in honor and request. So I have seen communications, I have not seen a circumstance or heard of a circumstance where a trustee or a supervisor, clerk, or treasurer was working with the commission in the same way that we might find a supervisor working with the planning commission on an issue separately than the trustee who's appointed to the planning commission. Does that make sense?
I think so. So when these communications have occurred, has it been by a board voting and then sending that communication to the compensation commission? Or is it individual members?
I'm talking about individuals is what I'm, my motion's referring to.
Well, I was asking, I was trying to understand what Jim was talking about, and you said that there was a communication to the compensation commission in the past in your experience where the message was to, please, please don't raise our cell.
I don't want to answer that specifically because I don't remember exactly, and I don't want to be incorrect or have anybody think I'm trying to mislead them on it.
Okay, but presumably that kind of a communication would come from the board, like a majority of the board communicating it to the compensation.
Mr. Supervisor, I think if I answered that question, I would be answering the question I just said, I didn't want to answer it because I didn't want to be incorrect.
All right, all right. I was trying to get at, I guess, a hypothetical. So, this resolution is, you know, I understand an effort to try and set some parameters for how Scioto Township moves forward with this compensation commission, which I think is an admirable thing to strive to do. I just am a little unclear exactly how it would work, and it seems to me that it would be cleaner to just simply say that there will be no communication from the members of the board trustees with the compensation commission at all.
I think that's an infringement of-
I think you're asking me a process and political question.
It's a policy.
And I don't mean any pejorative thing by saying political, what I mean is it's a policy thing for the board to determine.
Thank you, Jim.
Are there any other legal aspects to this of which you think the board should be aware in terms of sort of treading on?
I don't know how to answer a question of are there any other legal aspects. Am I thinking of anything right now? No, you appoint the commission, they'll need to call their first meeting and have an organizational thing. I would suggest that the board assign someone, and it could be mistaken, to facilitate that first meeting, it'll have to be posted, and then there are some processes that they can do. For example, at this commission's last meeting, it can set its first meeting for 2023.
Right.
As is last thing it does, so that everyone knows the date that the commission's going to meet in 2023, that you don't have to worry about it.
Well, from, maybe this is a better question to ask that you then, from your past experience working with compensation commissions, and given the fact that this one has-
Remark.
Okay. Hello, what just happened here? Did you all?
We all, you cut out, so we missed that last comment in its entirety. So if you could repeat that. That'd be very helpful for those people who are zoomed in.
So which comment did you miss? My comment or Jim's response?
You posed a question and there was a response from Mr. Fink that I don't think anyone in the audience caught.
Well, I don't know that he actually responded.
I didn't say it out loud, trustee Jerome.
Let me show his face, he wants to be done getting asked this line of questions.
Here's my advice. I think you have appointed this compensation commission, there's a statute that gives a little guidance, and you have a competent staff person and an occasionally competent attorney, and let's get them in a meeting, give them the parameters, find out what information they would like from your staff, and we'll do what we can to help them get their work done by the end of the year.
Yep, like that.
All right, thank you. Trustee Jerome, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, just, and this isn't for Jim, so you'll be happy. I absolutely agree that I don't think, I don't want to have any discussions with compensation commission, I don't want any overlap or undue influence- I don't want any overlap or undue influence in any way, shape, or form. I absolutely agree with that premise. Jessica, one thing I would ask, if I, maybe I missed this. We did, you did specify, we want to make sure that we're enabling the compensation commission with the backup. And you had specified something with regards to that. Could you clarify? Because I want to make sure that even though, and I totally agree with the trustees not in discussion with anyone on the compensation commission, I do want to make sure that we're giving them materials because obviously there is timeliness involved, that we're making sure that we support them from a township governance, government, whoever is helping them, excluding us. And I just want to make sure that we are clear that we are going to be providing those materials.
Exactly, Alec.
Myself.
Well, so that's why I said to direct that all officers of the board communicate any information to the compensation commission as a body, not to individual members, and to in fact cease any communication with individual commissioners now through December 31st. So what I was trying to get at there, Alec, is the reality that it's Donna, Will, me, you know, other officers that, you know, have different information from different communities, the, you know, all the studies that the other counties send and things. So I would forward that to them as an example. And that's all public. That's what I'm saying, Alec, is that any information that the township gives, that an officer gives.
We share as a body.
We, yeah, and it's just public because, because Alec, there's a practical element here that there's some information they're gonna need, want, ask for. And then also there's a, you know, First Amendment issue too. The seven members here may want to say something to the commission. And I, I think that that's, you know, each of the seven of our prerogative, if we choose to or not. But outside of communicating with that body formally, I say no, no communication with the members outside of that. Just, just because I, it was an idea that came up from a public comment. I think Pam Boyd at the last meeting, and I was trying to think about how we can, you know, create some distance, well, you know, provide the staff. So from tonight, you know, none of us would say, hey, you're appointed. Tomorrow, Christie would pick up the phone and let the five people know and get the work started. That's my intention.
So just to clarify, so this information, for example, you, you know, you and I and others, you know, started talking about, you know, what, what we could do to set them up for success and where we might get information for them that they would need. We would give this whatever we have gathered from other sources, from other townships?
Whatever information, yep.
Well, whom would we give it to? To Christie or to?
Sure. Yeah, we.
Or are you thinking that we actually would communicate, but we would do it only to the board? The, not the board, the commission as a whole somehow? And that's what the logistics of it are, what I'm trying to understand.
So I would say we would, I think we can work this out. We do this for lots of committees. We could say, send an email, starting tomorrow, send an email to Christie. This communication is for the entire compensation commission. You know, by next Monday, we'll have an email list, you know, set up for them and stuff like that. So Christie, I think, is a good person. She'll make sure whatever officially goes there, you know, we'll just address anything we have to the compensation commission as a whole. Christie will get it to them. It's all public and transparent.
Okay. Well, how is it transparent if it's all going to Christie? And is, is it going to be?
Because Christie will give it to the compensation commission members. It will be official correspondence. It's a public record. It's FOIA-able. They could present it at their first meeting, whatever it is.
So so then I guess it would be up to the compensation commission if they wanted to go a step further and create more transparency by saying, post all of this on the website?
The website or whatever, yep, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, but then it's a, but then it's like an official correspondence to that body and all those things can happen.
Okay.
That makes sense?
No, I'm, I'm understanding this better now.
Okay.
So with that understanding, are there further comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? In the absence of, well, I see none. So this is an action item. So are there comments from members of the public?
Yes.
I might just suggest that your, if you adopt this motion, your December 31st prohibition is December 31st or upon the transmission of the compensation commission's determination to the Board of Trustees. In other words, if they were done by the ninth of December, you wouldn't have to avoid, we know he's going to have a Christmas party this year, but you wouldn't have to avoid the communication once the work was done.
Right. Thank you, Jim. Good edit. I'll include that.
So that's a modification to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, are there members of the public who would like to comment on this before we call a vote?
And I'm just getting a lot of comments here about the blip. Yes, Zoom cut out for about 15 seconds. I apologize. And you, you didn't miss anything that we didn't repeat. And there are 41 people here. Those are all the questions. And please don't use chat for anything substantive. Save it for public comment. Peter Davis, followed by Rob Pattinson. Peter?
Yes. You raised an interesting question with this motion because Jack Knowles is married to Monica Knowles, a member of, not Monique, but. Can he speak with her about the performance of the employees of the township who are up for consideration for races? Can he discuss the performance of that person? So I suggest that Jack Knowles, by a perjury of reasoning, should not be allowed to speak with Monica concerning Will Hathaway's performance or compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is Rob Pattinson, followed by Jillian Carey. Rob?
Thank you. Thank you, Will, for the previous explanation about why the compensation commission discussion was at the top of the agenda. I appreciate that. I apologize for my overexcitedness, I suppose. I also want to say that I apologize that I may have jumped to a conclusion, but I hope you can understand why I would jump to a conclusion about the purposes of moving the public comment to after the compensation commission because of the way things have been going in the township for quite some time. That, that is a natural reaction to the mess that we've had. Thank you again for the explanation.
Thank you, Rob. Jillian?
Thank you, Clerk Flintoff, for watching out for the township and for everyone. Really appreciate this motion. So I want to second what Peter Davis had mentioned about Jack Knowles since he is working very closely with trustee Jane Vogel. And from what I heard, the compensation commission, committee, commission is going to review the trustees' salaries as well?
Correct.
Okay, then, since his wife has just been nominated to the committee, Jack should not be talking to anybody on the board. And according to all of these emails, that I didn't even FOIA Jane Vogel's emails, I FOIA Jack's just from this year, and all of these emails from Jane. So they are very tight. He should be, he should be part of that note speaking to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. I just want to respond to that.
Why don't we wait till the end of comments? Oh, it's the end of comments? Okay, go right ahead.
To clarify, the motion as proposed and as I would keep is, is a prohibition on the seven of us, the seven officers of the board communicating with the compensation commission. I hear the concerns about the potential conflicts. That's why I voted no, members. But I, I want to keep the, the motion as is with the prohibition just on the seven officers.
Jessica, you seem to have forgotten me. I think early on, when John raised his hand.
My apologies.
It's okay. I, I wanted to add, as soon as John, as soon as you board members voted, I turned to John and said, you are not to tell me anything about the committee. I want that known. Thank you.
Way to go, Pam. Good modeling. Any other hands? That's all. Will?
In that case, let's call the roll. But perhaps you could read aloud the motion so we're clear on what it is that we're voting on.
Sure. To ask the township attorney and office coordinator to work together to convene and provide staff to the compensation commission and to direct all officers of the board to communicate any information to the compensation commission as a body, not to individual members of the commission, and to cease all communications with commissioners, cease all communication with commissioners now through December 31st or upon transmission of the determination, whichever is earlier, and to request that the compensation commission return four separate determinations of compensation, colon, one for each the positions of supervisor, treasurer, clerk, and trustee, period.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees.
They're all included here. I would just note, there's a second set of ADA requests, concern about remote meetings, which will be talked about a little later.
And that brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matters under the purview of the Board of Trustees. If you are participating remotely, I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. If you are participating in person, you may approach the table when it is your turn. Trustee Jerome will serve as timekeeper and will announce when there is 30 seconds remaining and then time up. Out of fairness, please stop speaking when your three minutes are finished. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by the previous speakers. And please do not involve personalities. Be as factual as possible. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. To the trustees, I would add the reminder that we too should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. Now, are there any members of the public who would like to comment? And we'll take first those who are here in person.
Thank you for your patience.
Give us two years to look at the presentation.
Thank you.
My name's Al Banning, and I live on the very land off of Streeter Road in Streeter, north of Syo Church. And that stretch of Streeter is a real disaster for us to drive it way, way. And when it gets graded, if it rains anytime shortly thereafter, it just becomes a ruddy, muddy mess. And the part of Streeter north of our street is not as bad. And Liberty, which is also a lonesome road, is reasonably well. I'm not sure of the difference between those three. If it rains shortly after grading, it just becomes a real mess. I had a private Zoom meeting with the Washington County Road Commission a week ago, and I discussed with them and showed them the pictures that we had. They said that Streeter was last maintained in 2014 and that that type of road maintenance should last about up to seven years or so. So we're coming towards the end of that period of time. They mentioned that, suggested that I get with the Syo Township because you work with them and kind of have a list of projects for next year. So that wasn't the reason for coming at, at this time. For those who travel on Streeter daily, it is a real concern and it's not an easy drive. If you look at the pictures, it's just full of ruts, holes, bums, everything. And it becomes a muddy mess. So I would hope that between you and Washington County that you would look at that particular road and consider a possible upgrade for that road, whether it's, however, however you decide is best. But apparently, you know, the way it was done, three years.
30 seconds.
The end of its cycle, and they recommend that you look at it and potentially do an upgrade.
These are pictures of my road, Mr. Banning.
I'm sorry?
These are pictures of my road. I have the same situation. We've had it for years.
Okay.
And I'm not a fast driver. I'm very careful. But the other morning, which one of these pictures looks like it. I hate to say it, but all of a sudden I was kind of starting to do this and I thought, oh my gosh, what am I doing? And I was hardly, I mean, it might have said 15 miles an hour, but it was that, after that snow. And it rained, you know, it was, oh, it was awful.
I mean, it's a hazard, but cars sliding and the windows get covered and you can't see out in the back, and it's a, it'll be a hazard for the drivers.
Thank you very much. This is very helpful information to have, and we'll convey it to the Roads Advisory Committee. They're, I, I, they're the ones who will be tasked with creating a list of sort of priorities for road maintenance, and you may want to take an opportunity to speak with them as well.
Who is that?
Though, though trustee Noel is here, Kathy Noel, show yourself. Kathy Noel is your person. She is the trustee and the contact for the Roads Committee.
So trustee Noel serves on the Roads Committee. But I, I think your description is very helpful, and I think it would be good for the whole Roads Committee to hear it, if, if you are willing to go and speak, speak to them as well.
Well, I can talk to anybody that'll listen.
All right. Thank you.
So I'll talk with Kathy and Jocelyn as well.
Yeah. Good to see you in person.
Do you want us to keep these?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll pass them along to Kathy.
Okay, Will. If I could let him know, the next Roads Committee meeting is December 1st at 6:00 PM. And there'll be Zoom connection information posted on the Syo website.
And Kathy, I'll send you in the Roads Committee.
December 1st at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
And that's a Zoom?
Yes. It's next Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for waiting so patiently for, for your turn to speak. Are there additional people participating remotely who would like to speak?
Yes. First up is Harvey Summers, followed by Patricia. Harvey?
My name is Harvey Summers. I live at 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. I'm glad the township attorney has been present because I have three questions. The first, have you asked the township? The first, have you asked the Township Attorney about the possible criminal penalties under the Michigan Open Meetings Act 267 of 1976, which board members may be subject for not completing the OMA requirements regarding meeting minutes? Section 15, 269 Minutes, Section 9, Sub 1, as in part, the public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer. The public body shall make corrected minutes available at or before this next subsequent meeting after correction. You know that. The reason I ask is that the penalties in the OMA are also very clearly stated. 15, 272 violation is misdemeanor penalty. Section 12, Sub 1, a public official who intentionally violates this act is guilty of misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000. Section 2, a public official is convicted of intentionally violating a provision of this act for second time within the same term should be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined not more than $2,000 or imprisoned, et cetera. There's even a section 13 on personal liability. Second question, is it possible that each time the Board of Trustees refuses to complete action on the minutes of a previous meeting, but this can be considered a separate violation? In that case, your total number of violations appears to be adding up quickly. So far, you apparently could be liable for $65,000 in fines. The August 17 minutes, for example, were presented on September 14th and not approved during the past five regular meetings. Isn't that a total of five violations just on that set of minutes? The 13 set of minutes have not been acted on a total of 33 times. At your special meeting yesterday, you appeared, you moved action on these 13 sets of minutes to December 28th. That would appear to bring the totals to 66 violations. So my basic question is, who would pay the $131,000 in fines involved? Is this going to be the responsibility of residents as taxpayers? So have you talked to your Township Attorney about the penalty provisions violating?
Thirty seconds.
OMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Next up is Patricia, followed by Spellbound. Patricia?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Patricia Mazzola. I live on Galene Drive. I've been a resident of Sialo Township for 14 years, and prior to that, I lived in the city of Ann Arbor for 13 years. I grew up in Warren, Michigan, and I'm a graduate of MSU. So I've lived in three other U.S. states and even internationally. But I've made Washtenaw County my home. It's my choice to raise a family. When I lived on the east side of Ann Arbor, my daughter attended Emerson School. Driving to and from school, I've seen Sialo Township, the areas around Zeeb and Jackson Roads. I've seen them grow. There used to be just fast food stops and car dealerships, and over the years, I've watched many new neighborhoods, businesses, restaurants, and designated green spaces multiply. I've appreciated greatly how big box stores were controlled to the point that our burgeoning corridor does not look like another Ford Road or Carpenter Road or Ann Arbor Celine Road. That's one of the things that attracts me about this area, why I moved here, and what is keeping me here. So when I recently read about the prospect of one of our favorite entertainment destinations was possibly being replaced by a cold, uninspired storage facility, I nearly cried. My family and friends love riding our bikes or walking to the movie theater, adding dinner or ice cream, you know, passing shops along the way. My son has attended many birthday parties there. At 16, he hoped to gain employment there, and we had been waiting patiently for its reopening. The notice of its demise was devastating news. What this township has been building for many years was, is, a vibrant area for entertainment, a destination that thousands of people enjoy from all over the area. All that energy put into development would be wasted without this anchor of entertainment. However, in the same article, I read that the Planning Commission rejected the initial GKC proposal, asking for something better. So of course, we see a glimmer of hope. I immediately began reaching out to my neighbors and others, including creative Washtenaw, to get their thoughts. Nobody wants a boring, ugly storage facility on that property. Nobody. People want to move forward in the direction this township has already been leading us. There are so many community groups needing space, spaces to learn, explore, nurture, entertain. If we don't replace, if we don't replace the loss of an entertainment venue with another venue of equally or better yet, more diverse entertainment value, we will have squandered an opportunity. People will go elsewhere by necessity. How long would it take for our restaurateurs to follow? The Jackson Road corridor could become the destination for entertainment in this county. Though we need to move forward, not backward, it's an ambitious idea, I know, but if not now, then when? I'm asking this board to buy us, your community, more time to explore the possibilities of that space. Imagine a community arts and creative center for all of Washtenaw County, right here in Sialo. We are primed to be the little township that could. Let's become the little township that did. Thank you.
Yay. Thank you. Spellbound?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity. Christina York. I live on Riverbend Drive. I'd like to thank trustee Vogel for her diligent work to secure funding for the Border to Border Trail and extend the Zeeb Road pathway. I live near here on River Drive, and I travel that road frequently. I have been, I have seen firsthand the accidents and tragedies that happened along that route for pedestrians and cyclists alike. The B-to-B pathway provides a safe place for individuals and families to enjoy our beautiful township. And this isn't the only safety project that trustee Vogel has had success with in Sialo Township. The path in Parkland Plaza designed to get pedestrians off dangerous Jackson Road is another example. I am very grateful for her hard work and am in support of additional initiatives that improve the safety and quality of life for Sialo residents. I just want to say thank you to the entire board for your service and this opportunity to speak, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks very much, Christina. Next up is Diane Benson, followed by Rob Pattinson. Diane?
Good evening. I want to bring to everybody, everyone's attention the possible action of hiring Nancy Colasante to the part-time accounting assistant position. When I saw this on tonight's agenda, I contacted Supervisor Hathaway to remind him of what is required in the staff handbook. Sialo Township is obligated to ask a potential employee to complete an employment application and have that application verified by a background screening. Currently, the township utilizes an external firm fight for investigations. I'm hopeful that this process will be followed. In addition, there is an error in the description of the possible action included in the agenda packet. I did not interview Nancy Colasante. I did have a brief phone conversation when we were looking for a short-term solution for tax collection during the early weeks in September. She did not want to return to work for that temporary position, and so we had a part-time employee take on some extra hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I'm Jay Watten. Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. I wrote these comments tonight before the meeting. Some of, with the last two hours worth of discussion, some of them are redundant, but I believe the points are still valid. At last night's special BOT meeting, to deal with the mountain of delayed minutes, we were once again shown that this governing body never misses an opportunity to fail. I wasted an hour of my time attending a meeting where I learned the best possible solution to the problem that this board could come up with was to put off discussion of it for over a month. Reading Alice Owen's emails to the BOT tonight in tonight's agenda packet revealed several rational, well-thought-out questions and arguments to attend to the policies around recording minutes. This BOT couldn't even discuss the policies that could resolve issues about the recording of future minutes. She addressed many of those questions to Township Attorney Fink. Why wasn't he at this meeting where legal advice could have answered so many questions and allowed progress to be made? Two weeks ago, I was so impressed and thankful for the stand that the Treasurer made during the six-hour marathon mess of the last BOT meeting. One thing she said was the Supervisor and Clerk were going to have a talk with her and get some things straightened out that were no longer tolerable. I was hoping it was going to be one of those woodshed talks where the Treasurer, with over 30 years of service to this township, would lecture the newbies on putting their war aside and instruct them to do their jobs and serve the needs of the township. Reading the Compensation Commission appointment scheduled for tonight, that clearly didn't happen. Two weeks ago, the Treasurer said she wanted the Compensation Commission appointments done right. Tonight, not a single thing has changed in those appointments. The Supervisor had an opportunity to invite the likes of Mr. Masubag with oodles of honor and integrity to be on the Compensation Commission. Instead, tonight, he chose to continue to appoint the wife of the former supervisor, who was still involved in several aspects of running the township, including as a secret member of the TAP Committee. The appointed Compensation Commission represents the Supervisor, not the people who elected him. Thank you, trustee Vogel, for finally admitting to former Supervisor Noel's ongoing representation of the township. Just so you know, I've added up the times related to each BOT meeting since August 17th. You now have 45.8 hours of meetings to review and write your amendments to the minutes for those meetings. You have created a mountain of work for yourselves.
Thirty seconds.
For those of you concerned about the availability of those recording through the township, I invite you to visit the Sialo Community News YouTube channel, where they are posted for everyone to have access to. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Rob. And that's all the comments.
Well, no, Jessica.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam, for some reason I don't see your hand. Go ahead.
I know. It's okay. I'm going to lower my hand now. Treasurer Palmer, I'm sorry, I disagree with you, with your logic on agreeing with the, that it would be a shame to remove people that have already been spoken to. What about those volunteers and how they were treated by Supervisor Hathaway? They too have been treated poorly, and this is an ongoing problem with some on this board. There is no tact, and there is disregard for, for other opinions. I'm ashamed. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I see one other hand. I just have to find it. Yes. Next up is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brand, Sialo Township, Washtenaw County. I had a question on the motion to appoint the Compensation Commission. I thought I heard Mr. Hathaway say that the motion was put forward by Palmer and seconded by Palmer. So if you could clarify that, I would appreciate it. That's what I thought I heard. You know, could be wrong. My second item is, I wanted to ask this of Jane Vogel, but she dashed. So maybe I'll ask this of the Township Attorney. I want to know when Jack Knowles was appointed to TAP and when that was approved by the Board of Trustees. I was under the impression that all appointments to Commission need to be approved by the Board of Trustees. And trustee Vogel was very clear today that Jack Knowles is a member of the TAP Commission. So how can that be? If the attorney can weigh in on that, I would really appreciate it. But, you know, here's another potential legal liability. Thank you.
Let's wait until we've got all the comments.
Oh, sorry. There's one more. Gillian Carey? Gillian?
Yes, Gillian Carey. I'm curious. Quick Flintoff, on the last, when you were on the last board, Treasurer Palmer and trustee Kathy Noel were there as well. There was talk of creating an ethics ordinance, and then it was brought up again, but I have not heard much more about it. And from October, no, I'm sorry, November 3rd, 2021, Dexter Council considers final draft of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Ordinance. I believe that this is something that should, that Sialo Township should have, and to figure out what ethics is, you know, what is the definition, the definition of transparency? What is a conflict of interest? What is the appearance of a conflict of interest? This is, we really need to have this. I think that would clear up a lot of issues with, with a lot of things. So please put that on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian.
Is that Paul?
Yes.
All right. Did you want to respond to some of the questions of fact?
Sure. So quick response to Kathleen. The motion on the Compensation Commission's nominations, it was made by Hathaway and seconded by Palmer. Secondly, Jack Knowles is not a board-appointed member of TAP. We'll clarify that earlier, but I want to be clear, Jack is not a board-appointed member. That said, he is actively involved with the committee, just as any non-committee member. So.
Okay. Let's move on to reports. I think we have someone here to actually make a report.
Yes. Lieutenant Hunt, thank you for your patience.
Hello, Rob. I got to spend last night with the Dexter City Councils. Making the rounds.
Yeah.
It's good to see everybody again. And I just wanted to thank the board for hosting us last month while we were having our building renovated, and the renovations have been nice for us. It's nice to have a nice, fresh new station to kind of work in. So thank you very much to everybody for helping us with that project, and it's greatly appreciated of all of our staff. So the only major issue that we've kind of been having recently again is still some of the auto thefts along Jackson Road, and it's usually primarily the high-performance Dodge Chrysler Jeep vehicles, which is a problem across the entire region. So, and again, it hasn't been a lot of them, but there's been a few, the Larcenies catalytic converters and things like that have slowed down a little bit, which is good. But those vehicle thefts have still been occurring from time to time. As far as end of the year kind of transitions, we're looking forward towards operations next year and some changes. As far as staffing, we are looking at, we've gotten some of our staffing numbers have started to come back up, which is good. We still do currently have a vacancy on midnights in Sialo Township, and it's anticipated to be the same next year, and potentially another vacancy as we transition into January. But because of the numbers coming up, we're able to transition some of our staff back to some specialty positions that the Sheriff's Office had to pull the last couple of years, for instance, the auto theft detective, who actually is currently one of our day shift detectives here, day shift deputies here. He's going to be transferring back to a Michigan State Police Auto Theft Task Force. So having him working here for the past year and the fact that we have some of the issues we have had along some of the dealerships here, he should hopefully be able to help us with some of the additional resources that the state police can provide us for some of those issues that we've been having. So that'll be good for us. And then the other position that it looks like we're most likely going to be refilling is the deputy that was assigned to the Marshals Task Force, which is good for us for whenever we're looking for very dangerous, high-risk criminals that are difficult to track down. So having that resource back available to us, will be definitely beneficial if we have to look for anybody in the area. So those are some of the things we're kind of looking forward to in the future here. Currently, we've got seven new deputies that are in their final year. They've finished their training program, but they're transitioning into their final year. So they're still supervised and technically considered part of the training program, but they're on their own. So we've got seven deputies in that state, and then we've got seven more that are currently within the actual formal portion of the training program, three of which just started a couple of weeks ago. So and then some of those others will be transitioning to solo patrol very soon, so that will help definitely with our numbers. We do have four retirements coming up next month, so that kind of puts us at parity with where we're at right now. But we have sponsorships for upcoming academies with, the School Craft Police Academy. We've got three guaranteed, probably four, maybe even a fifth that we're going to be sending. It'll be a number of months before we start seeing those people, but we're still actively recruiting and trying to hire Harvey-certified deputies. But we're starting to make some headway in next year. Outside of the four retirements we have at the beginning of this year, next year, we kind of have a little bit of a break before we start having some more retirements. So we should be in a good position if we can keep attracting new staff to kind of get ahead of the game before the next couple, like in the future. to kind of get ahead of the game before the next couple, like in the future several years, we are going to have quite a few retirements again. But our staffing is looking better, but we're getting a lot of new, fresh faces, which is good. But at the same time, you also have some of that brain drain of losing senior staff that have that experience, which generally out here, we have quite a bit of senior staff. So that's good for you guys that you have investigative experience and people that have seen lots of different things and can be good resources in different ways. One thing to be aware of, somebody's been impersonating you recently. So if you can pass that on to as many people as possible, they're calling people up and saying that they're me and requesting money due to the fact that they tell them that they have missed jury duty. And therefore, if they pay them fifteen hundred dollars, they can make that warrant go away right now. And so unfortunately...
That's not true.
It's not true at all. Not true at all. So...
Around fifteen hundred bucks?
I know, I know. Gillian, this is a horror fact that I just even joked about that.
But a couple of people have actually unfortunately fallen prey to paying the people committing the fraud.
Oh, no.
Unfortunately, fortunately, several other people have contacted me directly, sent me either emails or called me. And we've kind of worked through the problem, but we're currently working on investigating what's going on with that. Earlier, about a month or so ago, there was somebody doing the same thing, claiming to be one of our sergeants, Sergeant Ross, who works midnight side of Dexter. So just if anybody gets any calls like that or hears of it, if you can kind of spread the word, the sheriff's office will never call you demanding money to get you out of a warrant. If you have a warrant, we'll come arrest you. We won't, just to reassure, we won't ask you for money. So just pleased that you can't help kind of get that out, or, you know, we're working on it, but again, it's an issue.
It's on the radio, WJR, at least four times a week, because it's all over the area.
Yeah.
So sad.
No, it's unfortunate. So just people being difficult. See if there's anything else specific that I wanted to bring up with you. You have any questions for me? Concerns?
I just had a question generally about the uptick in gun violence. Are we seeing that in this area of the county?
No, in this area of the county, not so much. Other parts of the county have seen it pretty significantly over the last year or two. So we are, we do meet regularly with ATF, our Detective Bureau, Detective Lieutenant, as well as some of the people assigned with him. And then the Community Action Team, usually representative from, which is our Street and Violent Crimes Team in Uspalani, which consists of three deputies and sergeant. They frequently take place or take part in that meeting as well, and they meet on a regular basis to discuss with the ATF agents, you know, what's going on, what we can do to charge some of these people that are committing these crimes federally as opposed to through the state, because federal penalties tend to be a little bit more severe. There's, you know, get parole, things along those lines. So we do work regularly with them. There's been some discussions about potentially putting a deputy or assigning a deputy directly to the ATF. They have a small task force to, again, deal with some of that gun violence on the east side of the county. But we do actually in some of the, some of the areas, apartment complexes somewhat, do get a little bit of cross-pollination with some of the people from that side of the county. Do have relatives or friends or spend some time in various parts of Sciouacan Township. Not frequently, but it does create some issues from time to time. We've had pursuits that are initiated on the east side of the county come over into Sciouacan Township because they're trying to get to a location over here or something along those lines. But there is a little bit of crossover, but the gun violence part, fortunately, we have not had any issues with. So that's good.
One thing I might suggest is what you described in terms of people impersonating you and trying to, you know, trick people into paying money that they don't, that they shouldn't.
Sure.
I don't see that in the report.
It just started in the last maybe two weeks.
Well, I know that the Dexter Sun-Times is, you know, very good about publishing information that comes from the department. It might be worth sending an email to the folks there in order to sort of spread, help spread the word so that people are more aware that this is going on.
Yeah, so that's actually on my list of people to contact, so that one's been discussed.
Okay. All right, you're already thinking of it. Great, thank you.
But no, it is so good. I'm glad you're thinking those thoughts for us too. So it's always better to have more thoughts come and answer. So any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Nice to see everybody. Take care. Again, thank you for the new facilities. It's greatly appreciated, so.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, you too. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Next up is our Utilities Director. Steve, Steve Wogowski.
Oh, here he is. Sorry, Steve, let me bring you in here.
Well, good evening.
Hello, Steve.
All right, are you all good? Can you see me and hear me?
Yep.
Well, I'm glad you can hear me. I'm sorry you have to see me, but... Well, I think we can all agree that winter is coming. So as such, cold weather's coming. We've been working on, we've got all the water hydrants winterized. Our staff did some, we used our new brush cutter around the water tower. There's a pretty large yard there that was really overgrown with weeds that we've got mowed down. And I guess another thing is we've been a little short-staffed due to injuries or, I'm sorry, illness and hospitalization. But everybody is back. Also, hunting season, everybody's back this week. And starting Monday, we have an intern that will be working in the utility department. His name is Rohan Sharma. He's a senior at Skyline High School. Seemed like a real nice, bright kid. He's going to help shine out with a lot of data entry and learn the processes that we do, and I hope it's, I know it'll be beneficial to us. I hope he learns something as well. One item that's still continuing is we're unable to order new meters due to the chip shortage. It looks like we're about thirty-six weeks out, so hopefully construction slows down a little bit and we can make it through until, with the meters, until the new chips are available and the meters are available. That's pretty much the water side. On the sewer side, we had a nice training session with Matt Kennedy of OHM, the Jackson Road Pump Station Oxygenation System.
Oh, good.
That system is used to reduce the odors as the sewage goes into the city of Ann Arbor, where it's released into the gravity sewer there. Been complaints in the past, so OHM designed an oxygenation system. And we had a really nice training session on that. So that's the first time all the guys have been trained on that. So it was very helpful. We also have an issue at the pump station with a couple of pumps. You know, they run, you know, nearly twenty-four hours a day, so we're going to get one repaired and we probably have to replace one of the other pumps. And let's see, I guess we're done mowing the parks for now. We've been mowing the aprons at the parks. We installed two preserved open space signs, one on Stabler Road opposite of Avalon Way and one on Park Road just west of Stabler. And let's see, we've got two meetings scheduled with the Woodhill Group. Thank you very much for approving that continued work. We're hoping to get some help with BSNA on how to do, how to get rid of doing the manual finalized bill and also the permitting process for new accounts. So I think that's going to be very helpful. We're also working with the Sustainability Task Force and looking to electrify our fleet over the next couple of years. So I think there's a lot of really great people on that task force that can steer us in the direction with grants and guide us through to get both our on-road vehicles and our mower electrified. So that's pretty exciting. And the final item I have is I'll go through the Sustainability Task Force. We had Bob Tinkle come through and do a, look at the Sciouacan Township Hall, and he's doing an energy analysis. So he's looking for opportunities for energy savings and opportunities for both saving costs moving forward. So I'm pretty excited about that. And with that, I'll take any questions you might ask.
Are there questions for our Utilities Director? Oh, I see.
That's okay. Steve, great report. Thank you so much for being here to bring us up to date. Question regarding the pathways, the sidewalks. I just wanted, I know we touched base about this, just wanted to ask you to pose the question to the board.
Yeah, thank you very much for reminding me about that.
Sure.
So my question to the board is, you know, traditionally the utility department took care of the water and sewer lines. And since I've been there, you know, we've been kind of expanding into the parks and pathways and doing some different things. And my question for both staffing and purchasing of equipment is, what is the intention of the board? I don't know if you've discussed it or not, as far as winter maintenance and maintenance in general of the pathways. So in particular, are we going to have some seasonal-type pathways or some going to be maintained year-round? Or what? I'd like some direction on that moving forward so I can plan accordingly.
And I would all, I know this question has come up before. I, you know, Jane may have an answer or others. I imagine that it may vary. Hopefully, somebody's thought about this. I think we need to think about ADA accessibility, if there's any that require snow removal throughout the year. I don't think we've done that before. Alec has his hand up. He can probably speak.
Yeah, I see. And Alec, I was going to ask you to speak to this because this is, I know, something that the Parks Advisory Board has thought about, and it's the Parks Advisory Board that we tasked with sort of making recommendations about maintenance of facilities, including the pathways once they're constructed.
Yeah, and so first I'd like to say thank you to Steve and crew for all their assistance in all the parks and pathways to date. Because it is an ever-expanding role, as you'll probably agree.
Yeah, I'm excited about it, yeah.
And I think that, you know, there is no blanket answer for all of the pathways or all of the parks. You know, similar to portions of the border-to-border, a lot of the local municipalities take on maintenance, such as Dexter. However, Dexter Huron does no clearing of their park area. So it is something that we're going to be looking at, and it is something that we want to address. It's hard to formulate a holistic policy based on the fact that there's only certain sections that are available currently. And I think there's an intent, obviously, with some of our nature preserves that there wouldn't be as much maintenance and path maintenance in the winter period. But I will make sure that it is a part of our Parks Meeting agenda, and we start to deal with that. We have had discussions about it, but it's a great question. And I think we all knew when we started on this pathways and parks initiatives that there would be an ever-expanding role for utilities, and we'd have to develop that as we went along. So I appreciate the question, and I'll make sure that we start to address it in our meetings.
Yeah, thank you, Alec. And also, I spoke with Andy Turner briefly, and I think he was going to include me in your next meeting. So I'm looking forward to that.
My view, Steve, is that there are some sections of the pathway network that are sort of priority for keeping clear. And one of those I would think of would be the Parkland Plaza sidewalk, because part of the impetus for putting that in place is safety in the winter for people who are making their way along Parkland Plaza towards either to or from Jackson, Jackson Road. And in the past, pedestrians had to walk in the road because there was no other place for them to walk. And as the snow accumulated along the edges of the road, it became increasingly dangerous for pedestrians to share the road with automobile traffic. And so I think everyone is looking forward to a safe pathway during the winter along Parkland Plaza. Trustee Jerome?
One quick comment as well. So there also is, in the month of December, a joint meeting with the Parks and Pathways and TAP group to start talking about the budgets required and talking about our budget process and CIP. So we'll also be including some of those questions, Steve, that you're asking in that conversation as well. And I think that's the one I need. I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
I lost the last part of what Alec said. Did you have an additional comment? No, okay. Are there any other comments or questions for Steve? Steve, I also know that you're working on following up with, about the air quality at Township Hall. And I don't know if you have anything further to report about that or...
Yeah, you know, as we talked, thanks for bringing it up again. Yeah, I was looking through my files to bring up, I refreshed myself earlier on the two products that are out there. And I will, I will check with W.J. O'Neill, who is our HVAC company tomorrow, about the two products to see whether they carry those and what they recommend. So I will have information for you by next week.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to reports from, regular reports from the members of the Board of Trustees. The first of on the list is the Gelman Report. Trustee Noel?
Yes, this will be brief. Bill Stapleton, Keith Gadway, Will and I met last week to discuss future well-testing in Sciouacan Township. I'll go into some of the details of that meeting in a minute. We are still waiting for the results of the most recent testing. It's due this week or the beginning of next week. As soon as we have the most recent testing results, the four of us will be meeting again or having a conference call. In our meeting last week, we came up with some very tentative plans. There is no firm plan in place at this time. I know Pam Boyd and Rob Pattinson have been waiting and asking, and I'm sorry to report, I don't have anything firm to report. We don't have confirmation yet from Pace Environmental down in Florida that they are willing to facilitate the testing of forty to sixty additional residential drinking water wells. Keith Gadway at Quantum Environmental is the person who has had all the contact with them. And he's having difficulty getting a straight answer from them and confirming all the logistics. So we are still waiting to hear on that. We've discussed a tentative plan, but this is very tentative at this time. The consideration of the township paying for the additional testing. And we have defined a rough geographic area that we would target for this testing. Residents would do their own water collection. But we hopefully would have a kit from Pace, and we would have packaging instructions and collection instructions for the residents. But this has yet to be worked out. So I'm going to just leave it there. I don't know when we're going to have more information on this. The general parameters that we are considering for the testing have Miller Road to the north and approximation of Honey Creek on the west. And there's a jagged boundary going south and north on Wagner Road and then back over... And there's a jagged boundary going south and north on Wagner Road and then back over to Miller Road. The map that Keith gave us as a tentative map has portions of the city of Ann Arbor in it and I, I don't think he realized that. So we'll have to address that issue because this isn't all Scioto Township. So we're in a holding pattern right now. And as soon as I have more information, I will report it. It will go up on our website. This is still a work in progress. So unfortunately, that's the way it is.
And we would, thank you. And just to clarify, before we could proceed with that program, if we're able to pull together cooperation with the lab and, you know, and all of that, we would be bringing a proposal to the Board of Trustees for approval.
Yes.
So there would be that step before we could actually move forward with it. One of the, one of the things that I've heard in conversations, you know, that I hope will reassure people somewhat is that tests that yielded positive results are very isolated. The other wells that were tested yielded no positive results. So it's not as if there are many wells so far that have been detected that have a positive dioxin result, test result. We're hoping that that is, remains the case. We're going to keep, try and keep people informed as we have more data. So the township is still moving forward with its own testing, correct? I mean, that's, that's what you referred to, the next, the round of test data that we're waiting for.
Everything that I referred to was township only.
Yeah.
The one thing I did not mention is that we will be coordinating with environmental health at Washtenaw County. Once, we have a plan. They haven't seen this plan yet. And they will have input into it. But none of this is county testing that we're, that I'm talking about right now. All of this would be Scioto Township only testing.
Great. Thank, thank you. Is there a question or?
Follow-up Kathy, is there still a desire to have a meeting yet this year on this issue? Either in the community or with the board? What are your thoughts?
Yes, we had talked about that. And I guess as we've kind of been put on hold getting this additional information or confirmation from Pace, everything has kind of slowed. And then we've had the holidays coming and I, so we don't have a firm plan in place, but we could briefly discuss this as a board. I am open to it and I know Will was open to it too. So.
And what's the idea for a special meeting?
We don't have the data yet from the most recent round of sampling. And the idea was we would have that additional data to share when we had a meeting.
So yeah, I was under the impression that we were sort of waiting for the data to come from, back from the lab before we would schedule the meeting. And the delay in getting that data back is, is sort of slowing us, slowing us down in addition to the delay also from that same lab in responding to the questions about setting up some kind of expanded testing program. But I think the intent is still to have a meeting and so, you know, we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, maybe you could open it up and ask residents if there are any quick questions that we could answer about this right now.
Sure. Are there any questions from members of the public?
Rob, Rob Pattinson, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Noel and Supervisor Hathaway and all of the board for this continued work on the dioxin testing. We understood all along that this was going to take time and you have a lot of pieces to coordinate. And we sincerely appreciate your continued work. When you're ready with data and ready with the time for a public meeting, we'll be happy to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Pam Boyd.
Thank you. I agree with Rob. I also want to point out that you can't put the fear back into the box that residents have felt after the article came out and Supervisor Hathaway's notice in Next Door came out. I got a fair amount of residents contacting me. And there is a lot of fear. And yes, we, we need to look at this logically and calmly. But how do you tell people that you need to wait? It's hard. Thank you.
That's all the public. I'll just say as a resident of North Wagner, I'd like to work with you Kathy and Will on kind of planning that meeting.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Next up is Steve King.
Thank you for taking my question. Being fairly close to the Huron River and at this point away from where the plume is going to be, I'm very concerned about what science we can count on for how this plume is going to be moving because it's, it's dangerous for human life. It's going to, I mean, you can say you can discount the fact that it's an economic issue, but when you have a house that you can't sell, I want to flashback 40 years to the residents of Three Mile Island in New York that had to, you know, lose all of their livelihoods to save their lives. My point has been to many people at this point, when you look at this plume, do we know what happens when this goes into Honey Creek, goes into the Huron River, goes into the Great Lakes and then into the ocean? What is the effect going to be? Where do we, where do we draw the line? What do we do as, as residents of this township, residents of the state in the United States? What do we do to try to stop this spread? My concern is not just for myself. It's not just for my wife. It's not for my family. It's for everybody else around here. Because honestly, when we say we're going to kick this can down the road, the longer you kick the can down the road, it keeps getting kicked. This has to be addressed. It has to be addressed now. I've been a resident in this township for 30 years. I have gray hair. I hope that I continue to grow gray hair and not have it fall out because of this poison. This is an issue we cannot stop kicking down the road. We have to find a way to address it and make a super fund, make something happen. This is, you can't just, you know, you just can't stop saying, oh, well, we can do tests. No, you can't stop doing tests. You have to use the best science we can say and it's like, we don't know how it's going to spread. Stop. Think about all the lives that are impacted. The people that eat fish out of the river. The people that live along the river. The people that I see hundreds of people canoeing on the river, swimming in the river. All of these people are affected. This has to be addressed now, today, and it has to be done. Stop kicking the can down the road. We have to bring this to a bigger audience than this. It's, it's serious, people. Thank you for your time.
Well, I'd like to respond to that.
Thank you.
But Kathy, can we see if there are any other comments and then respond all at once?
Okay.
No, no more comments. Okay, please respond.
Okay. Steve, as you know, there is an EPA request out there right now. And if the EPA chooses to become involved, that is our best option for getting a comprehensive plan in place to clean this up. So those efforts are underway. We also have the simultaneous effort with the other intervenors in the state action, which is currently on appeal to the Michigan Court of Appeals. So that is underway, although that is moving very slowly. Scioto Township had a responsibility to do some additional testing. That's part of the picture too. So this whole situation requires like a multifactorial approach. And that is what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next report. The next report on the list is the supervisor's report. I will try and be quick. We are all very pleased that David Rowley has accepted the township's offer of employment as township administrator. Assuming that the board approves the employment agreement later in this meeting, David will begin working at the township on December 1st. As we heard in the detailed report from Trustee Noel at our November 9th meeting and again today, the township's well testing project has revealed that the dioxin groundwater contamination has spread further into the area north of I-94 and M-14. And we are working with our environmental consultant to determine how best to continue that testing program, including responding to requests from property owners who would like to test their own wells. This is the immediate task, but we are also looking at the need to provide an alternative source of drinking water to those homes that are located in the path of the spreading plume. I know that Trustee Noel and I have both begun working on reprioritizing the plans for a North Loop water main that would serve this area of the township. And we will have more to report on that in coming months as part of our capital improvement budgeting plan. I'll just segue right into the DDA report. There is a nomination on the consent agenda to fill a vacancy on the DDA board. Linda Smith is a Scioto Township resident currently on the Roads Advisory Committee, where she was chosen by the committee to serve as its chairperson. She has generously, generously agreed to serve on the DDA board as well, thus providing a joint appointment. Linda is manager of a business in the DDA district and a developer of the Scioview Residential Development off of West Liberty. Next report is the clerk, I believe.
Sure. Briefly, I just want to let everybody know I, I saw Chief Hood today. He came into the office in some brand new clothes that his wife had purchased at a store for him. And he looked great, gave him a big hug. And he is popping in and out of the fire station this week. He should be back mostly almost full-time next week, but he just really appreciates the community's support. And he is determined to use his own personal experience as an opportunity to train all of us on how to prevent fires. So he certainly has a unique perspective on what happened to him and what we can all learn from it. So we're all glad he and his family is okay. And I'm glad to have him around again. Elections, we will be coming to the board probably maybe by the 28th, definitely by the 14th with a budget request and some precinct changes, some small things related to the redistricting that's still going on. Budget and Finance Committee, our next meeting is December 15th at 3:30 PM. Please show up. Donna, thank you for your work on the corrective action plan that we're required to submit to Treasury. I will share a copy with the board of, of what we submit there addressing some of the issues identified. That's all.
Next is the treasurer, I believe.
That's me. Well, I had a real learning experience today, everybody. We got the tax roll in, finished, and I'm ready to print your Christmas present tomorrow. The winter tax bill. But it was very interesting. I never worked on this phase of tax collections before. And our former assessor said he would help and he was in today. So that's what I have for right now.
Next up is the broadband task force. Trustee Jerome.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm not feeling the best right now. So I just wanted to update people that we met this last week, week, this week, previous week. And they're working on the awards for the contracts for the ARPA funds, which was the last, which was designated by Washtenaw County as the part of the gap filling funding for that. I did want to let people know, and I know there's been some inquiries, because there's three different efforts that are going, that are being used to support all of the broadband in Washtenaw County. One is ARPA, one is CMIC, which is connecting communities, and one is ARDOF, which is the Rural Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. If you want, and I will make sure that I post this, I was going to read them out loud, but it's not worth it. There is a website for the ARDOF funding locations. You can go to the website to see whether or not you are part of the ARDOF broadband proposition and work. And then there is a separate website, which is at thewashtenaw.org/broadbandtaskforce. There's actually a separate page for it where you can check and see whether or not you're part of the ARPA, which is the gap filling, or the CMIC, which was in partnership with the ARDOF originally. Those are the three initiatives that are being used to address broadband throughout the county. And if you are not designated on either what ARDOF, CMIC, or ARPA, there is a contact on the Washtenaw.org/Broadband Task Force page where you can notify people so that we can try to make sure that that you are possibly incorporated into one of the three efforts that's being taken in order to provide broadband for the county. And I'll just say Parks, there's really no Parks update. I think we covered most of that when we were talking with Steve. We meet in another week.
So we'll have more of a Parks Advisory Board update at our next meeting. Land Preservation Commission, do you want to speak to that?
We met this week. We continue to work on our negotiations and the permutations of the RENS property, which is the property on Wagner Road in relation to getting that complete. Obviously, we got an extension of a short period of time in order to be able to review the survey and appraisals that were provided to us for those properties. So we're working on that. We continue to work on our issues with creating a process for potentially reviewing applicants that would want to be potential partners in farming those properties. And we're also reviewing additional applications at the same time.
Thank you. Planning Commission, we do not have our representative to the Planning Commission present, nor to the Sustainability Task Force. So we'll hold off on reports from them until from those, on those bodies until our next regular meeting. The, and same with the Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee, Roads Advisory Committee.
We have not had a meeting since our last board meeting. The Roads Advisory Committee meeting is next Wednesday and it's at 6:30 PM, not 6:00.
6:30, okay. That brings us to the Consent Agenda. There are four items on the Consent Agenda. Is someone prepared to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Still moved.
Moved by Flintoff, support by Jerome. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Great. That brings us to unfinished business. First item is the approval of hiring Nancy Colasanti to the position of part-time accounting assistant to the deputy treasurer. And I will turn to the treasurer to introduce this agenda item.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to make an addition to the action item, whatever. It's also assistant to me, not just addressing the treasurer.
Ah, okay.
And working in that area and any place else the township may, at some point.
So in the model motion, we would, we would say assistant to the deputy treasurer and treasurer?
Correct. I would like it to read that way, please. Thank you, sorry. Should we have that pulled out? Yeah, thank you, yes. Nancy Colasanti, just to give you some background. Nancy Colasanti, just to give you some background information, worked for us, well, it's been 17 years ago. Her son is raised, going to college next year, so she's ready for some part-time. And she is very, very good at what she did, which is similar to what we're looking at when the need is there. I know her well, and I understand where we as a township have been going with background checks. This, I know this person well. There's, I'd like to consider that, ask for that to be waived in this instance. She has filled out an application, by the way. So it were really to the point where I would like board approval to hire this person. We've offered her $27 an hour, which is close to what she had before. She was making 26 when she retired from the position previously. I have not looked for anyone else because I know this person. She's honest, she's accurate, and she's not looking for full-time. So it's a win-win for her and what she'd like to do and for the township. So that's, I'd like to make the model motion that we do offer her the job, hire her, and that, do you want me to read the motion as?
Please do.
Okay. To amend the general fund balance to authorize payment of $27 an hour for a part-time accounting assistant to the deputy treasurer and the treasurer, and approve hiring Nancy Colasanti for this position so that the deputy treasurer is able to provide necessary support for budget-related functions as needed by the supervisor. This was part of what we had talked about for Sandy in her position as well. She has a wealth of knowledge, and we need to tap that knowledge for some of these budget capital improvement plans. So this will give us as a township a chance to do that. So again, that's just some background info on that motion.
And I would support that motion. So it's a motion by Palmer, support by Hathaway. Are there comments by other members of the Board of Trustees?
I have several questions before comments.
Sure.
So the last time this was on the agenda, first of all, I just want to say it's awkward when an agenda item has somebody's name in it. I don't know Nancy, and so I just want to depersonalize this. The last time this was on the agenda, there were two items. One was the creation of an accounting assistant position. And then the second one was to appoint her. So two weeks ago, you moved to table both and said we would bring one back. You said, you know, we don't need to bring this one back, we're not doing that. So we don't have a position. I guess I'm wondering, what is the job?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I looked back at some communications between the two of us, and I realized that we don't need to create a position for a part-time position. We don't need to have a job description for it. We can just go ahead and create it, which is what we did with the prior part-time position.
Okay, so this is a temporary, so you don't intend to?
This is a part-time position.
That is not this position description that you proposed last meeting? I'm really just trying to get clear.
She will, what Nancy will do immediately will be help with the receipting of cash receipts.
Okay.
And it already, it goes, it ebbs and flows with a utility billing cycle.
Okay.
But we're moving into December, which is a heavy month.
Yeah.
And from here on out, it will be, be heavy until the end of the tax year. We have to have help. As we know, Rebecca did this before, and you know, it's, we moved it back into my area because of the demand on her time.
Sure.
That she needed relief. But one person cannot do this now by themselves.
So, so?
So that's one of the things. She will help with other aspects of the tax collection and anything perhaps that she could help Sandy with as she's working in these areas of budget, capital improvement, anything. Any, because she's got the ability to do that.
And so is your intention that it's temporary, part-time, no benefits?
No benefits, part-time help.
Okay.
I'm not going to say temporary because we don't know.
Well, I meant in terms of our classification, because I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, because temporary and permanent, the way that we use it in our book connotes different things, right? So temporary is like our administrative assistant at the fire department or like, you know, when you had Doug working a little bit. And versus permanent, part-time, you know, Mary Gillis, our deputy clerk, is permanent, part-time. So she accrues PTO, but no other benefits. And so I'm just trying to get clear on what it is because I just want to make sure that with the 20s?
It says it right here in the motion, part-time. It doesn't say temporary.
Well, that's what I mean.
But let us, let us get that addressed when, I mean, let's talk with Nancy as well. I know she just said she was ready to start part-time back in the working field.
Well, I just want to know for it, because if it's permanent, and Diane has criticized our use of this, but if it's permanent, then there are some benefits.
The PTO, right?
Okay.
That's the only benefit, right?
Right, I mean, unless it's full-time, but it does matter. I mean, we, we?
I understand. Let us decide then.
Yeah.
So we have, yes, for the record, for the personnel records, et cetera.
So Donna?
I haven't discussed it with her, but she wanted some temporary time.
Okay.
Or part-time, I'm sorry. She said part-time.
Okay.
And we have a need, and I know she can do it.
In August, we approved up to $6,000, 20 to 23 an hour, to bring in a part-time person to help. And we talked about it, and Doug was available. We paid him 23 an hour to help out during the last tax season. It was about 48 hours. I know he only did a part of it. But that was just over 1,100. So there's still nearly $5,000 worth of authorization there. I mean, and I would just say, if it's a temporary, part-time thing and you want to still use that existing authorization to just, you know, bring her on on that or increase the authorization, if it's supposed to be kind of a flexible floater.
I don't understand why we're debating, you know, this question of temporary. The motion says part-time accounting assistant. That's the motion that we're considering. If you are proposing to amend the motion, then, you know, then?
I'm just saying, our personnel policy requires the word permanent or temporary for it to make sense.
And I said, let's talk with Nancy, find out, so she understands.
I just want people to be clear about it.
I understand it has to be clear for the record. I'm okay. I understand that point, so.
Are there other comments from other members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Knoll.
I had a couple of questions. Some of them have been answered now with this discussion. But one had to do with this issue of a background check that was raised by our prior HR person when she spoke in public comment. I would think a routine background check in a situation like this, where this employee is going to be handling cash and doing cash receipting, would be standard procedure.
It is.
Okay.
We just did for the fire admin. And I would say, you know, it's a leak, it's a problem for employers to treat people differently. Donna, for exactly the reason you were saying, like, we may know somebody, we may not know somebody else. We need to have standard procedures for folks. And that's why every offer, as it was even for our township administrator, the offer of employment is contingent on completion of a background check, whether that's just a cursory, you know, commercial background check or something more in-depth. But I certainly wouldn't want to proceed in any way that's inconsistent. And it looks to me like this hasn't been, this motion doesn't look like something our employment attorney has weighed in on.
Jessica, you interrupted me.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, trustee Knoll. I clearly have a difficult time keeping control, but please go ahead.
It's not about control. Okay.
Okay, so this issue of a background check, I think is a significant issue that needs to be addressed. I want to pose two other questions. We are about to hire a new administrator. And couldn't he be involved in some of these discussions with a potential new hire and some of the questions we're asking here right now? I mean, we don't have to decide this tonight, is what I'm saying.
It doesn't seem right.
I also want to know if this position was advertised, was it posted?
No, it was not.
So you didn't consider any other potential?
I said that. I said that.
No, she spoke, she spoke to that, the treasurer spoke to that.
Okay. When we approved the Sandy for being deputy treasurer, I thought we were told that there would be no additional costs incurred. That's my recollection. So I'm just, I'm a little bit puzzled that there might be additional costs here with a new part-time person to work for.
She won't work for free.
I know, I know. But I'm wondering, some of these duties that you're describing, Donna, aren't they deputy treasurer duties?
No, not necessarily.
Well, then if they're all?
The deputy treasurer will, you know, works at the pleasure of the treasurer, but we have a resource in Sandy Edler that I want to be able, as a township, to use.
Right.
And, but you've also said that deputy treasurer job isn't full-time, so we got to figure this out.
Look, if you don't want to approve this, I don't, then don't. And we'll struggle through the receipting process, the heavy workload that will be coming up, and we'll get it done.
Well, the point, I think, trustee Knoll, that bears emphasis is that we also discussed the availability of the deputy treasurer, who has the skills and the experience and the knowledge and the qualifications to help with budgeting issues that I need help with as the supervisor, and bonding issues that I need help with, and capital improvement budget issues that I need help with, to make her available to help with those things. But she won't be able to if she is having to do all of these tasks that are, you know, occurring at the same time of year as those important planning issues are occurring. So in some ways, hiring this accounting assistant, Nancy Colasanti, to assist the deputy treasurer and the treasurer is also assisting the supervisor to accomplish the work that he's responsible for.
Well, what bonding issues are you contemplating?
Well, these capital improvement projects that we're talking about, the capital improvement such as the North Loop of the water main, I think we need to look at possible financing of that through bonding. Now, we may be able to get state funds, water resource funds, but my understanding, and I'm, you know, I'm new to this, but I'm learning as I go. That's part of the reason I need, you know, the help from the deputy treasurer, who has more experience. My understanding is that in order to qualify for those water funds, you have to go through the bonding process first. So you have to sort of demonstrate to the state, yeah, that you have, you've got everything all lined up as a bonded financed capital improvement project before you are eligible to receive those water funds.
Okay.
Another comment from the clerk.
Yeah, so I know that you need some support with the capital planning and the budgeting, and I think that makes sense. I will say the bonding thing is kind of another, I would imagine that conversation coming out of the capital planning, there may be some things identified, and then it comes to the board, we figure it out. The CIP is something that we did for the first time last year. I worked on it with Woodhill. Woodhill spent 33 hours on it. 33 hours on it, plus my time consulting with, not much, consulting with each of the committees. So I think at minimum, and again, the capital improvement plan is required by our ordinance, which we ignored for 10 years before we did it, and it's a good practice. We want to update it. We could always do more, but we have a template now. So I think that, you know, the work is really sitting down with each department head and each committee and having the conversations. And I think Sandy and you doing that would be, be great. I mean, I think Sandy could just knock that out. On the budget process, you know, we have a template. You know, Sandy's done it for, you know, many years and has a way of doing it. We added to that. I added a kind of small narrative two years ago with a forum. The Budget and Finance Committee updated that, so we have those templates. And then we have a document now. And even with that big, robust budget, last year, that was 132 hours of Woodhill time, plus a lot of your time, Will, my time, and a lot of committee time consulting. So I would just suggest that, you know, even with the holidays, I know it's tough, but I think that, you know, Sandy is a whiz on this stuff. I think if you two sit down and come up with a plan to get these done, it's very possible. I also know, Donna, just what a resource we have in Christie and Fran at the front desk. And when those taxes come in, you know, January, February, you know, they're just pulling them in. So, you know, and I don't know after that. I defer to you. But I don't know. I think that, you know, I would prefer, Donna, to maybe table this just till the next meeting and kind of tighten it up a little bit before bringing it back.
Well, by the next meeting, we'll be swamped.
Yeah, we need to move forward with this now or we're not going to be in a position to have the help when we need it. And that's why we brought it back today and?
But then tax bills haven't gone out yet.
Yeah, but we need to make this arrangement now. If we wait until our next meeting on the 14th and we go through a background check and we, you know, everything happens after that, then we're, you know, we're basically talking about sometime in January before we could bring Nancy Colasanti onboard. So the timeliness of this is tonight.
Then I'm sorry. I won't, I won't be supporting it tonight. I would support it if it were better developed. And again, I really object to the township treating people we know differently than people we don't know. That is not being a fair employer, and I, again, would caution us. We cannot treat people differently when we bring them on. We have to have standard procedures. And if we do a background check, we cannot make exceptions to not do background checks on people just because they worked for us 16 years ago or we know them well. That is just ripe for abuse. And I know, Donna, that's not your intention. I'm just saying, it makes me extremely nervous.
Well, that's not a part of the motion, so that's actually not something that we would be voting on.
But the absence of it has been made clear, and the intention to not do it has been made clear.
Yes, I was honest enough.
Yes, I was honest enough to front whip out of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we don't need one with her.
And I hear you, I respect that. I'm just saying, as an employer, that creates problems for us.
I don't, I disagree, but that's okay.
Fair enough.
Trusty Jerome, do you have a comment?
Just a couple of comments. Because, you know, we've spent months talking about the, I hate to use the analogy gap filling, because I just talked about broadband, but the, sorry, the gap filling needs in budget and finance across the board and a myriad of areas. And I think that the individual identified, you know, has, you know, extensive experience in BSNA and township governance and mechanics of the township. I'm also relying quite honestly on Treasurer Palmer's 30-year-plus years of experience with regards to the needs of these, you know, different activities that go on. And I'm not as attuned to the timing of them as Treasurer Palmer is. And I guess I was also under the assumption, and I believe this is the case, that when Mrs. Egler was moved over as Deputy Treasurer, there was also the promise or the intention to essentially share her services and expertise with other areas. And so in order to be able to allow that sharing, we need to be able to help, you know, support different, you know, other areas in her, under her purview so that she can then refocus attention, you know, depending on what part of the year it is on a particular item. I would be more comfortable, I'm in full support of the hiring of, you know, this individual for the position. I would be more supportive if it was contingent upon, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to be as in-depth a background check as we've done, but, you know, following a procedure for township officials, I am absolutely in support of hiring the individual.
My understanding from the communication I received from Diane Benson, our former HR consultant, is that the background check in a case like this would be a review of the information contained in the application. We now have the completed application from Nancy Colasanti. So the step, the next step, as I understand it, would be to have a review of the information that's in her application by Pfeiffer, the firm that does these background checks for the township.
And a commercial criminal check and credit check.
Well, presumably that all could be done fairly quickly. It's not the kind of, not the kind of in-depth check that we've done for some other positions.
So it would be exactly the same check that we did, say, for our new administrative assistant, temporary employee, part-time at the fire department.
And I think regardless of the fact that Nancy has worked for the township in the past, that we probably should go through the
It's been a long time.
The same procedure. I know that, you know, even though she left township employment, she has come back, I mean, many years ago, she has come back and sort of done short-term, part-time work for the township since then. So it's not as if she's just been completely gone and out of the township.
When did she, what work?
This is my understanding, I didn't go back and check exactly when, but, you know, over the years since she left full-time township employment, she has bent back and helped out on occasion. But in any case, I think we're in agreement that the background check as described will occur. And with that, are there any members of the public who would like to comment before we vote?
And I just want to say, one more comment is that the mushiness of this motion, again, the budget-related functions for all of what we've talked about. I mean, I will say again, I'm astounded to hear that the Treasurer needs a deputy and an assistant. The deputy's been on the job for two weeks. I've seen the tax intake process before. It's something that's done part of each day, not the whole of one person's day. So Donna, and Will, I have been involved in the budgeting process. I have seen the budgeting processes of the past, the CIP. And so with all due respect, I just do not see the need for additional help. I'm also deeply uncomfortable with the mission creep of it. I will say, as clerk, I will not be assigning any duties to this person. I don't know her skills or qualifications, training, reference checks, anything like that. So I'm deeply uncomfortable for several reasons, and I, this is bad precedent.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this before we call the question?
Pat Stein, followed by Pam Boyd. Pat?
Hi, Mayor. So let me get this right. So we have someone we want to hire tonight. She does not have a job description. We have not completed the vetting process. And she is going to be working on her, the Deputy Treasurer, who left a job of almost $100,000 as a full-time employee and is now under the Treasurer as a part-time employee. And we're hiring a part-time person for her. As a taxpayer, this is really concerning. This does not sound like a, that the Asylum Township Board is not spending my tax dollars wisely. Especially when you look at the supervisor, who now has a double salary. And he is hiring an administrator that's going to take a load off his job, but he still needs all this assistance as well. I think we need to rethink this. And I'll tell you what, with my background in HR, this is really a bad move. And I think you ought to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next up is Pam Boyd, followed by Jillian Carey.
Whoa, guys, slow down. We are not a charter township with a charter township budget. I agree with everything Pat has said. And, you know, we've got an administrator that's getting, looks like it's going to get hired, and then there's the project manager. Yeah, I agree. Don't be spending my money this way. This is ridiculous. And I really have concerns that you guys have, you're at the top of the ski hill and you're skiing down this hill on my money. And I don't like it.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Jillian Carey. Jillian?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I have the same concerns. So again, just to be clear, the Deputy Treasurer, and she was, Sandy Egler was brought on the last meeting, voted in. And when Treasurer Palmer asked her what her job description, because there was confusion with the officers or the trustees asking, trying to figure it out, asked Sandy Egler, and Sandy did not answer that question. So what is her job description again? So she's being paid $94,000 for part-time. And I'm assuming that she doesn't want to work full-time. So you hire somebody else at $27 an hour, which I believe the Deputy Clerk is getting paid $27 an hour. So if this new person is being paid $27 an hour, it seems like that person would be the Deputy Treasurer. Okay, it's very confusing. The other thing is, I think I recall Clerk Flintoff needing some help in her department. And she was, there was a big fight about it, and she still doesn't have the help. So Rebecca is doing a lot of extra work and stressed out and doesn't have the support. But now we have, it's very confusing. So it's whatever, you don't want Jessica to have in her department statutory duties and to kind of sabotage that area. But then you want this other area to be well taken care of. Also, I've heard that Clerk Jessica has been mishandling money or spending too much money because she brought in Woodhill to straighten up our finances. And they've done a very good job, by the way. None of this makes sense. And the running with scissors with spending money and all these projects and plans before we even get our foundation solid is very scary. But then again, there was somebody on the committee, one of the insiders, that said, oh, we can solve those problems. We'll just go to charter township status. Well, sure, we can do that. But if we can't handle the money now and what we're doing, then having more money is only going to make it worse. And then, you know, then again, you'll get rid of a lot of people that, you know, can't live here, and then you'll bring everybody. So it's, I guess it's a win-win for certain people, but not for most of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, oh, one more hand. iPhone?
Hi, guys, it's Alice Owens.
Hi, Alice.
And I'm kind of thinking about how we got here. And I understand the confusion of a bunch of people. This really sort of, I think, started with what I think was kind of a package deal that was looked at last meeting, where there was the creation of Deputy Treasurer. And there was going to be a Budget Director element of it. There was going to be an assistant. And basically, it was a way to really kind of transition, understand what we needed as, you know, this new position Deputy Treasurer, et cetera. And so, you know, that ended up being a long discussion. Obviously, then it sort of boiled down to we're going to do the Deputy Treasurer part of that. But, you know, looking at the work-to-do list that came out of the Budget and Finance meeting last week, you know, there is basically the budget capital improvements, these bonding things, things like the DDA, et cetera, that all have Will's name next to it, but with nobody to help him. And I do recall that, you know, part of the discussion at the last meeting was, well, that's okay. Part of Sandy's time certainly will be dedicated that way. And so, and then, I guess, so first off, this makes sense to me because it just made sense to me the last time. And I under, or I don't really understand why it didn't pass the last time, but this makes sense to me to bring somebody in. And if it's not a consensus item, fine, make it temporary, whatever. But I guess the next thing that really doesn't make sense to me is the suggestion that we're somehow wasting money. You know, the budget last year was done by Woodhill at $125, $150 an hour.
It cost $17,000.
We basically pay Sandy, you know, all in with benefits, $41 an hour. But she was told not to do the budget. And we did the budget with the much more expensive consultants. So to me, getting in somebody who has the history, the continuity, the familiarity, and even if this is a stop-gap measure, but it frees up Sandy to do, you know, budgeting, capital improvement stuff, whatever this bonding is with the water things, it just makes sense to me, and it seems very cost-effective as opposed to the continued push to use outside corporate consultants for what should be internal civil servant jobs. I'm going to say it one more time. I just, I think this is a good use of township funds. And I'll remind everybody, whether you were, you know, the Jessica chart or the Will chart or whatever, everybody's chart had that more in-house capacity was needed. And this feels stop-gap, but okay, let's just get it done. And you can't, I mean, if you wait till the next meeting, you're talking middle of December, what, December 15th? And then, I mean, with holidays and things like that, Donna, you won't have any help, and Will, you won't have any help until January, is my suspicion. So I think this is prudent. And I'm, I'm just befuddled. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Next up is Kathleen Brand. Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brand, Asylum Township resident. With deference to the last commenter, let's talk about the number of hires, new hires, that are proposed by this board. We have a new township administrator, salary in excess of $100,000. We have a proposed, I think agreed-on project manager that's supposed to take on all this administrative task, which I believe it was also said that that person would be managing the finances for the DDA and some of these projects, like the TAP Committee. So now we have gone from a supervisor position, which Jack Knowles stated recently that he could manage as part-time as long as he had a full-time manager. Okay, so now we have a different supervisor who needs himself to be full-time, to have a full-time administrator, to have a full-time project manager. So what exactly is the supervisor going to be doing with all of this extra help? And now he's also supposed to get some of the help from the Deputy Treasurer? What's going on here, folks? This is not prudent. It's not cost-effective. And if you want to talk about saving money and bringing things in-house, why don't we bring the planning in-house? We spend $350,000 a year just to have Doug Luon. You can't tell me you can't bring in-house a planner in the range of $100,000. Plus, we have an enforcement officer. Plus, we have a zoning, whatever, review officer, which all comes out of Carlyle Wardman. And then we've got all these other consultants for engineering, OHM. We've got Washington Engineering. But we only talk about Woodhill? Now we've totally loaded the employment balance to assist Mr. Hathaway. What the heck does he do? What's he going to do besides being his own property manager for Hathaway Rentals? Because I don't see it. So it's not prudent. That's a false narrative. The excess is ridiculous. And let's really bring some stuff in-house and save some real money. So I don't know. I don't understand the last commenter. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I want to respond to one point of fact.
Sure.
I just want to be clear, there's suddenly a lot of talk about bonding. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to state from our residents, we're not bonding anything until we talk about it here at the board table. Correct, Jim? No one sitting, not one of the seven of us has the power to go out and bond alone.
Are you talking about selling finance bonds or bonding of people? You're talking about selling finance?
Yes. We also, I direct everybody to our debt policy, which we passed, and it sets forth a process for this. So any of this work that we need to do, which, you know, I would need to be convinced of, that that is the way to finance things, would come out of a CIP, would go through a process. We have an attorney. There's a process, it's not imminent. The budget and the CIP is work that any one of us should be able to support Sandy with. It is convening and conversations. Third, I spoke with Rebecca today to get a sense of, and I think a lot of this nervousness is just around the unfamiliarity. You know, this is new work for Will. There's some, you know, new roles for Donna, and I know she's been knocking that out with Murry. I will say, Rebecca said that tax collection, December, there's not much. That it really gets busier toward the 214 deadline. She said on Mondays, it takes about four hours. And then during the week... She said on Mondays, it takes about four hours and then during the week, it's about two to three hours a day because it's, it's Christie and Fran at the, at the front desk. So I would just say again, um, I, I think that, you know, if this is more, and I think when I was listening to Alice and Alice, I want to apologize because I blurted something out while we were talking and I apologize. That was rude. Um, the seventeen thousand dollars that it costs Woodhill to do all of that planning that we'd never done before, the four thousand dollars for the CIP, this is a fraction of what we have historically paid our staff. Um, I will also encourage everybody, um, we're going to be talking about this more, um, the corrective action plan, how we've done budgeting in the past, how we're doing it going forward. But I'm telling you, in finance, we are improving practices, getting more and more aligned with best practices.
How, how is this responding to a point that was raised by one of the commenters? It's just another speech?
There was a lot of points I was responding to.
Okay, well, let's move on now to call the roll for the vote on the motion and we'll read the motion again just to make sure. Um, this is to amend the general fund balance to authorize payment of twenty-seven dollars an hour for a part-time accounting assistant to the deputy treasurer and treasurer and approve hiring Nancy Colasanti for this position so that the deputy treasurer is able to provide necessary support for budget-related functions as needed by the supervisor. Please call the roll.
I've had my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rebecca Maude.
All right, one more comment.
Well, and one more comment from finance manager Rebecca Maude. Thank you to staff, no matter what you have to say, for speaking up to the board. Rebecca?
Um, I have been doing this solely for the last two years on my own, along with my other job duties. And I think you're pushing this forward tonight without putting this employee through the rest of the hiring process that the rest of us have had to go through. Um, and without Sandy being in the position to know if her and Donna can't handle this on their own, when I've done it for two years on my own. Maybe Sandy and Donna together are able to do it on their own. I just, I think you're pushing it through and I don't support it.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Are there any other comments?
I don't see any.
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay.
I am going to withdraw the motion. And the reason I'm going to withdraw the motion because I'm not sure I want to ask anyone to come work here in this environment. If this is what we have to do to convince people there's a need, I don't want that attitude flowing in to the office area in my area. I will tell you, I will get the work done. None of you have any idea what actually goes into the tax collection. Yes, Rebecca Maude had, did a fabulous job, but she wasn't interrupted by emails. She didn't have tons of messages waiting for her every morning. She didn't have meetings at least once or twice a week, some usually a morning, three hours. That's all part of my job as an elected official. I understand that. The law required on getting the money distributed. Read the audit, folks. It mentions a couple of instances that it wasn't done timely. I'd like to be able to address that, but don't anybody worry, it'll get done. And I'm withdrawing the motion. End of report. Let's move on. No size, let's go to new business.
Well, we still have actually another, another unfinished business item and that is um, the um, employment agreement with um, the township administrator hire, uh, David Rowley. And uh, let's see, where were we?
It's right here. The C1 Township Administrator Employment Agreement with David Rowley.
Okay.
Do you have it here?
I just wasn't quite ready for moving on to, oh, that's not it. All right, um, so, um, this is a, um, approval of the employment agreement with David Rowley to serve as township administrator. Um, the, um, this was added to um, the, the packet late because we got the confirmation late, uh, sort of close to the meeting from um, Mr. Rowley that um, he was accepting the offer. However, in order to actually make the offer, the board needs to approve the employment agreement. The employment agreement, um, and the job description that, um, which attaches to it um, are in, uh, before the board, the model motion is that the Board of Trustees approves the attached employment agreement for David Rowley to serve as township administrator. Um, I will make that motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Flintoff, so motion by Hathaway, support by Flintoff. Is there discussion?
I just want to say thank you, um, Donna, Will, um, Bill Thacker, our employment attorney, and to David Rowley, who's on um, Zoom here, along with Amy Sell, our recruiter, who's on Zoom here, the whole board. Um, I'm really excited about this. Um, I think we all did a good job during a very difficult year to come up with a job description, um, work with a great recruiting firm, go through a robust process. Um, I know the staff is excited as well and I think, um, I don't know, Will, if you mentioned the start date would be December first.
Um, yes, that was mentioned, not just now, but before.
Great, so I'm really excited.
Are there other comments? Members of the public?
Uh, yes, David Reed.
David Reed, Sound Township. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, David.
I have to say, I find it quite hypocritical that the board complains and complains that the minutes aren't posted within forty-eight hours before the meeting. And yet here you have a motion that was posted, what, four hours, five hours before the meeting? And it's a motion that affects our decision, that affects the township financially as well as managerly and for, it could be for, for many years. And you added it at the last minute and folks haven't had a chance to read or digest the data and I think it's extremely hypocritical for the board to act on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Rebecca Maude. Rebecca? Rebecca?
I'm sorry, I thought I lowered my hand.
That's okay. I thought, I thought you were being rather chatty. Those are all the hands.
In that case, um, please call the roll on the, um, motion to approve the employment agreement for David Rowley to serve as township administrator.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes, I was like, who's that bozo? Okay, five zero, motion passes. Congratulations, David. Thank you, Amy.
All right, that moves us, where's my agenda? That moves us to new business. Ordinance amendments to Chapter 12 Businesses.
Great, thank you. Item K1, moving through the ordinance review, um, brief discussion. Chapter 12 Businesses, been a lot of markup from our attorney. This hasn't been touched in many years. It deals primarily with two types of licensing, um, for massage businesses and also for peddlers. Um, so these are both areas under the clerk. The third is related to marijuana businesses, which is superseded by some other ordinances. So basically, um, this is cleanup on the policy and process for issuing peddler's permits, people who go door-to-door, as well as policy and process for approving massage businesses. Um, and this is something I've talked with, with Doug Luon. I can, um, work with our planner. I talked with him, he doesn't think that the planning commission needs to look at this. I also want to open it up to the board to see if there's, um, other issues that you want to look at. I would recommend keeping it narrow, just getting this up to snuff for these two areas. And if in the future, we want to expand the business ordinance, um, to other items, we can. My recommendation is that I work with the township planner, the sheriff, the fire chief and utilities director and to return with recommended amendments to the board. Any other input or direction?
Should there be someone else other than just like one, one representative to become the board?
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with, um, anyone else on this.
It's a lot, you know, when you start digging into those things.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I would, I would be, be happy to. I'm going to, um, I'm having informal conversations one-on-one and then, how about this, Donna? When it comes back prior to, you know, coming back for the next round with the board, um, I'll reach out and ask you or Will if you might be available. Thank you.
And we talked about how there'll be an opportunity for people in the business community to have input before we-
Absolutely. Yeah, so, so we'll go back, put some policy ideas into it, have one more legal review, have a public hearing and action sometime in the new year.
Would planning commission be involved in this in any way? I mean, that's what they do.
Not on this, Donna. It's a good question. Um, not, not on this one. I talked with Doug about it. These are, these are sort of the, the oddball ones that come up every so often.
Yeah.
And just infrequently enough that they get out of date.
Okay. Yes, they are infrequent.
That's all I have.
Okay, um, the next item is discussion only, update on recruitment for the position of finance director.
Great, this is just discussion only. I want to, um, oh, I just want to note, um, we have just, um, Alex Jerome shared, he's not feeling well.
Oh.
And he just left.
He did say that.
Happy Thanksgiving at all to all, so he has just left the meeting.
He did, he did say that he was not feeling well.
So I want to note that, excuse me. Um, discussion and, and I just want to share these materials to kind of give folks a sense of, of where I'm at in the, the process. As you know, um, with Sandy's transition out of the finance director into deputy treasurer and, and with all the work of, of finance, um, and, and I have some different charts that we're putting, um, you know, um, areas to that just weren't quite ready to share. I want to share them with, um, Donna and Sandy and, 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 um, see if they're, they're making sense. But I do want folks to know that, you know, my intention is to really kind of look at what we need and, and come back to the board, um, with a proposal. As you can see, couple of the things, you know, you see the change, the one FTE, um, finance to treasury, I intend to fill it. Um, I, I smacked together a, a, a org chart, which I believe reflects all of our, um, directives to date. You'll see we have a few unfilled positions. Um, with the arrival of David Rowley, our first township administrator on December first, um, you'll see, um, with all of his responsibilities, um, there's no shifting in the finance or treasury function, so it's still an issue we need to solve. I'll welcome David's input on this. And I, I want to, you know, just underscore that my assessment is that we really need more analytical skills and breadth of finance experience, um, in the township to complement the skills that we have here. I, I want to show, um, in particular, if you look at, I guess it's page, I think it's one, one nineteen, but it's, it's, uh, it says a guide to writing job descriptions and it's from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a great resource. They have several example job descriptions and I'm just sharing one, it's called Chief Finance Officer, that's not what I'm imagining, but if you look, um, it, it starts listing out the detailed lists of CFO responsibilities, financial leadership, um, communication of financial information. And so we're going through and kind of highlighting the ones that we need. So I'd love to get folks in, in, input on this. I think we've done a lot of financial operations, but not had the financial planning. When I go back to look for any kind of long-term plan, they've all been contracted out, plant, Moran, other things. I haven't, um, seen a lot of robust, um, long-term planning or, or auditing and it's, it's probably partially because our staff hasn't had the time, um, to attend to that because they're so busy with the day-to-day. Um, accounts receivable, purchasing, accounts payable, payroll, audit, year-end reporting, debt management, insofar as it's related to, to the ledgers. And then you'll see that budgeting is typically part of finance. It can of, of course be pulled out, but Will, you might want to look at duty four and five. That's kind of a nice shortlist.
Which page is that on?
Of budgeting duties. I think it's page nine of the job description. Twenty-seven. And so anyways, I don't need to, I, I just want to say I want to hear from everybody. The job, the, the, as you know, um, good finance people are hard to find, especially in today's market. I, I don't know if it'd be, uh, I would hope it would be a civil servant. I'm with you, Alice. I, I, I do not want to privatize government. At the same time, I do want to professionalize township staff. And so that's going to require, um, a strong job description, a good recruitment, um, maybe reaching out to, um, Amy Sell or another good recruiting firm in order to, um, find that kind of person if it's not, um, through a consultant. So I'm open to all ideas, having a lot of conversations and, um, we'll keep the board apprised and, and hope that we can, uh, come up with a proposal pretty soon. Any questions or, or, um, comments?
Kill it or this one?
Yeah, and we can, we can talk more, yeah.
This is what printed off in my-
It may be that you printed off early before everything was attached. I think there were some things that were attached to this kind of-
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I think that's part of the issue.
This gets very frustrating. It's not the first time it's happened.
Yeah. Okay, um, then let's move on to, uh, the next agenda item, which is a discussion of remote meeting participation for members of township, board committees and for members of the public.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is prompted because, uh, 2022 is around the corner and the Open Meeting Act provisions change on 12/31/21. As well, we have received several ADA and other related requests for continuation of the public's ability to participate in remote meetings. We're sitting in this beautiful room, um, that we have outfitted for, um, hybrid meetings. And so I wanted to put this on the table to make sure that we all understand, um, kind of what our parameters are for meetings in 2022. And so to do that, I put a draft for discussion. I know, I'm sorry Jane's not here, um, because I know she wanted to see, um, you know, these sort of procedural memos before I send them out. But this is just for discussion, it's not gone out, but I want to go through this. If you go to the memo, guidelines for procedures for committee meetings. And what I tried to do here is kind of set forth the key guidelines I want all of us to understand and talk about so that we can plan, uh, for how we're going to conduct meetings. so that we can plan for how we're going to conduct meetings in 2022. And this applies to each township board or committee when they're considering and adopting meeting procedures. First of all, meeting location. Beginning on January 1st, there will be no fully remote meetings permitted under the Open Meetings Act. That means there are no Zoom-only meetings. So, we have several committees currently doing that. I think PC went to that. There are no Zoom-only meetings. All committees of the township should have their public schedules reflect that their regular meeting place is meeting hall, if possible, and no committee should meet in person with no virtual option for participation. We have a protocol for this. We're pros after a year and a half of pandemic. Public participation. The public has a right to attend all meetings, as we know, except for closed session. The OMA's never limited the remote participation of the public, only that of members, members of committees and the board, who until the pandemic, if we can remember that far back, we'd been required to participate in person. Earlier this year, we adopted a resolution attached which permits the remote participation of the public for any reason indefinitely in board meetings. It encourages committees to adopt procedures that do the same. And all of our committees have done so. I would encourage them to continue to do so. But they are each their own public body and may each adopt their own procedures. So, there remains no requirement for a request for accommodation, pre-registration, or other barrier to participate in township meetings. So, I want to be really clear, these ADA requests, these requests, right now, the policy is... They need no request, it's open to all. And I would expect that we will keep it that way. Now, member participation. This is where it gets sticky. Beginning on January 1st, we have to come back and participate in person. All members of the committees participate in person. The only exception for members is those who are actively deployed military members. Actively deployed military members. I apologize to Kathy Noel, and if I mentioned it to anybody else, I want to apologize because I was mistaken. The last couple of weeks, I thought that there was an exception as well for medical. There is not. There is not an exception for a medical reason. So, I had imagined a bunch of our members of committees would be able to say, yep, I have a medical reason. We're still in a pandemic, and I'm not going to pretend like we're not. I'm joining remotely. That's not a possibility. You have to be in person. So, if a member of a committee calls into a meeting, via phone or Zoom, participating by at least voice, if not voice and video, they're not considered present. They're thus not counting towards quorum and are not permitted to vote. So, I want to first ask if anybody has any questions about this, and then let's start talking about some of the implications.
So, the form that was provided earlier attached to this, which is no longer attached, is gone because it doesn't really apply?
It doesn't apply.
Well, I guess it applies for people who are on active military duty, but not for the medical exception.
Correct, yeah. There is no medical exception past December 31st, and I apologize. I had to go over it with Jim four times before I got it right. So, we are still in a pandemic. We have a nice big room, a couple things. Kristi, I just can't say enough about our office coordinator, Kristi, and the whole staff. I mean, everybody's been such a champ through this pandemic, being flexible. So, some strategies. I want to say if COVID gets really bad, you know, a committee might skip a meeting. They might decide to skip a meeting. They might decide to stagger a meeting. That could be something they could do. Kristi, right now, is surveying all the committees, making sure they've got their committee times and dates firmed up for 2022. People need to remember to plan for commuting time if they haven't been for a year, if they've just been turning on their Zoom. I strongly encourage staff, public, consultants to participate remotely if that's preferable to them. Again, the fewer people indoors during the wintertime, the lower risk for all of us. Kristi is going to look at this room with me and figure out how we can get a little more space between each of us. Further, there are these goose neck microphones behind us. We're going to try setting those up because those work really well if we are in the situation where we're all masked and having a meeting. Those microphones will work a little better. Those are all the ideas that we've thought of so far. Any other strategies or reflections?
I don't see anyone seeking an opportunity to speak.
Okay, and then the ADA requests. I do want us to talk as a board, maybe at our next meeting. I think what they're reflecting is an anxiety from some, many, many members of the public about some discussion at the board over the last six months about either reducing access to remote participation or eliminating it. So, that has come up in our Rules of Order conversations, most recently. It's not something we're going to decide tonight, but I do think that it's important, and there are some strategies on firming that up. So, we should figure out when we are going to talk about that, if it's going to be in Rules of Order or as a separate item at some point.
Yep.
But generally, with the parameters for 2022, is everybody clear? And Kristi and I will work on kind of sending out the procedures memo to the committees. Just, you know, what's put the top of the agenda, the stuff we've been doing for two years. We've had about three versions of this.
Well, I would like to give the members of the Board of Trustees, who are not present for this discussion, a chance to have some input. Can we circulate this to them?
Yep, they have it.
Well, I know, but they aren't present for this discussion where you're saying, I'm going to send this out, and it has a date of tomorrow, November 24th, on it. I would just like to circulate this to them and get their input. Many of them are serving as representatives on these different committees or commissions and have that before we send this out to the committees and commissions. That way, they'll be on board, at the very least, with the information going out, and it won't catch them off guard.
Sure, yeah. I can send this out early next week, and it'll still give... I want to make sure that the committees have a cycle of meetings so that they have a chance to adopt the new procedures.
That makes sense. If there are no further comments, I think we can move on to the final public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Now, we have lost our timekeeper. I don't know, Trustee Noel, if you are up for being the timekeeper for this last round of public comment?
Why don't you ask Donna?
I don't have anything to do it with. I'm sorry.
I thought you wanted somebody who was there. That's what you said before.
Well, it is ideal, I think, to have someone who is present. But obviously, we've been making do without that at many meetings, when Alec hasn't been present but has still been serving as timekeeper. We'll do the best that we can. Is there someone who would like to speak during public comment?
Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak. Rebecca Maudy, you have your Zoom hand up. I don't know if you intend to. There's a second hand. Nope.
Kathleen Brandt.
Thank you. Kathleen Brandt.
Hi, Kathleen Brandt. I want to... Donna specifically... I'm sorry, Georgia Palmer, specifically about promotion for additional staff. Donna, my comments were not directed at you. My comments were directed at Supervisor Hathaway in that everything he was saying about this position, he was justifying as giving him help, not you help. And so, my intent was to say, how much help does the supervisor need when we have now went from 1.5 full-time equivalence with Jack Knowles to now 3.0? We've doubled that specifically for help for the supervisor. So, my comments were not directed about your staff, your area. They were completely pointed towards Mr. Hathaway suggesting that this additional person would be helping him for bonding and budgeting. And I take exception to that. I hope you appreciate that. I hope you understand I appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is David Rowley, Township Administrator. David?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
All right, hello. Well, first off, I would like to just say thank you very much to the Board of Trustees for their support and for this opportunity. I do look forward to beginning the position and to working with all of the board members, the township staff, all the employees, and most importantly, the members of the public of SIO Township. I've listened to many of the meetings, so I've heard a lot of concerns, and I hope to be able to offer suggestion and opinion and any additional support that I may be able to provide. And lastly, I would just like to say again thank you to everyone for this opportunity, and I will plan to see all of you on December 1st.
We're excited to work with you, David. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good holiday.
Yes, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
You too. Any other hands? All right, 20 hearty Zoom attendees are still on, but no more hands. Will?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move?
Move by Flintoff. Support by Palmer. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 11 o'clock.
I like your name.
All right, thank you, everybody. Good night.
I did look...